Welcome, everyone. I'd like to call our town council meeting to order if we could rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Roll, roll, okay.
I'm here.
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 I'm here.
There he is. Yes, unfortunately, Donna Beach will not be here tonight. Her mom passed away yesterday, so just take maybe a moment of silence for her mom and... Thank you. So she won't be here tonight. So our condolences go out to her and her family for that. Yeah, yeah, we'll definitely do something. Okay. What do I have here? Okay. I just have a proclamation I want to read. And there's a couple others that I had done recently. I'll just mention them briefly after this proclamation. Just so you folks know, one of the reasons why we do proclamations like this is we, this one is for June is LGBTQ Pride Month. And we've had requests, we just had one actually at our last meeting, to fly flags from different organizations and different months, different things. So, you know, to do that would be very difficult to fly things at the town hall. Once we open the flag flying, it could be really, and a lot of towns have run into this, it could be any organization, any flag that... And this is not one of them, but, you know, it could be whatever organization wants to fly a flag. Once we start with that, there's no way to really stop it. We would be sued. So we only have, you know, the town flag, the state flag, the United States flag, and military flag would be flown at town buildings. But we do proclamations every month to recognize different folks, you know, different organizations and different things that are going on in the town, too. So that's, that was the decision. We did a, we passed an ordinance a while back to, to make sure that's clear. And a lot of towns have done the same thing. So I just wanted for June, the town of Berlin recognizes that June is celebrated nationwide as LGBTQ Pride Month, and that our great nation was founded on the principle of equal rights for all. As a community, Berlin is inclusive and strives for diversity. We welcome all people and believe everyone should be able to live without fear of prejudice, discrimination, violence, or hatred based upon gender identity or sexual orientation. The town of Berlin is hereby proclaim June 2025 as Pride Month to honor and celebrate our LGBTQ citizens. Let us as a community continue to build a culture of inclusiveness and acceptance for all. And that's resolved by myself recognizing June 2025 as LGBTQ Pride Month dated today's date. So let's keep that in mind for this month. A couple other, a couple of other proclamations that I've done recently of note. One is we didn't get to do it yet, but it's going to happen in September. It's worth speaking about. It was the Worthington Meeting House. This is their 250th anniversary is this year. It was built in 1774 before, actually, our country was officially founded, which is interesting. And I'll meet it when it gets closer, but we were going to do, they were going to do a ceremony Saturday, but because of the rain, they didn't do it. So unfortunately, but they're going to do it in September, so that, we'll see when the date, the date comes for that. We'll make sure we get that out there for everybody in town, because that's, you know, our oldest building and they wanted, we want to do some restoration with that. And we should, because it's, you know, very, obviously, a very historical building and we want to keep it and make it into something a little bit better than it is. It's deteriorating. We want to keep it, keep it, you know, fixed, fix it up and keep it for many more years. We also did a, we had a nice celebration at the Berlin Senior Center, which was its 40th anniversary. Over the past four decades, the Berlin Senior Center has witnessed remarkable growth only in our membership, but in the diversity and depth of the programs, activities, and outreach, serving as a lifeline and a source of inspiration for countless individuals and families. The center has continually evolved to meet the changing needs of our community, offering lifelong learning opportunities, wellness programs, arts and cultural events, social services, and volunteer activities that educate the mind and enrich the spirit and empower the individual. The Berlin Senior Center's success has been made possible through the dedication of its staff, volunteers, community partners, and participants who have shaped its welcoming and inclusive environment, making it a model for senior engagement and support. So the strong and enduring relationship between the center and the town of Berlin reflects a shared commitment to honoring and uplifting our senior population while fostering intergenerational connection and civic pride. So we had a nice little presentation at the Senior Center and, last week, and we had a little dinner for the, for the folks that attended. So it's a, it's a great senior center. It's not going anywhere and it services a lot of folks. Oh, yes, that's right. You're right. Peter reminded me. They did get a national award, right? Of, one of seven. So that's the kind of programs that we have there, which is great. I forgot about that. So... That's good. And I had another one I had done for a gentleman. Maybe some of you know him, Anthony Dorito. His leadership in service in the Boy Scouts of America. He was involved in scouting for 20 years, 10 years as the scout master of the town. And he's just put so much time in volunteering for the scouts. He helps out at the Sacred Heart Church for the Berlin Fair. And he was stepping down as being, you know, involved as he was from the Boy Scouts. But we gave him honor at a dinner that they had, or a ceremony that they had at the VFW last week. So just a couple of things that are out there. All right, so back to, okay, those are the, those are all proclamations. And now we are at our audience of citizens. What I might ask you, if you are here for the public meeting on the disc golf, I would ask you probably wait till we open the public hearing. You know, it makes more sense to testify during that than, than in the audience of citizens. So whoever's there when that comes, it's obviously for the public to speak. So we'll, we'll hold off on that. And what's, it's coming up, where we at? We just have to do, I got a couple of things to say, more things to say. We've got a consent agenda. And we just have one quick public hearing and it would be the second one. So it should be within 15 minutes or so. Yeah, it's not, we won't keep you here till, we could keep you here till maybe 10 o'clock is when we'll get to it, but no, 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 we won't do that. We'll do it. We'll do, we'll do it upfront, so you folks can say your, say your piece and we, look, what's that?
Planning and zoning.
Oh, planning and zoning. Oh, yeah, yeah. Okay, where are we at? Oh, the mayor's update. Oh, oh, audience of citizens, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I stopped you from the one thing, but not for other stuff. What, oh, we have a sign up here. Okay. Mr. Richards. Have a... Sure, of course.
For the record, my name is John Richards. I live at 239 Hawthorne Drive, Berlin. Mayor, I'm appearing before you based on some comments that were made both at the last town council meeting and in comments I've read at the Board of Ed meeting in regards to the second referendum and how it may be interpreted. My thanks go to the town manager, town clerk, and to a small extent, the registrars. I've been trying to get more information on what I'm about to share with you tonight. But I wanted to lead it with the thought of what becomes significant in terms of influence when we're looking at the referendum and in particular, the advisory questions. As the council knows, the charter, 2016 charter, it's section 7-6 specifically lays out the questions that have been hearing on the referendum. The first question is, do we adopt the town budget? The second is, do we adopt Board of Ed's budget? And in between, there's a, well, you know, if you voted no, can you help us out? I'm ad-libbing a little bit here and, but it does say, can you tell us whether you were voting no because it was too high or too low? To give us some information so we can move forward. What we know, or what we can say is observed is that the number of responses to the advisory question is greater than the number of no responses. This is because our voting machines aren't able to differentiate when someone votes yes, but then chooses to vote on advisory question 1A or 2A. So we get extra votes. And I dare say that what I'm going to share with you tonight is, it's my belief that not only is there a net influence, but there's also a, if I didn't vote no and I chose not to give you any advisory information, those votes that would have been in the no count are being replaced by yes voters who are answering the advisory question. So what I've got for you here is my statement, which is that I believe that, first of all, the results of the, in particular, the Board of Ed's defeat of its budget is that the advisory question is essentially a wash. So if you look at my second page, the first question that I would ask, and I would have asked this if I had the opportunity before the referendum, because I think it's important that we establish expectations of what makes the advisory, which is to be considered. It's not necessarily a, it's to go verbatim, but what would make it significant to act upon? Though clearly, in the first referendum, the amount of too high versus too low, again, there were more of them than there were no votes, but it was a clear majority of too high. And the council took action to reduce the Board of Ed's budget by $50,000 in the second referendum. Second referendum, the Board of Ed's budget was defeated two to one. Advisory question appeared essentially split. Again, with the 21 votes more on the advisory question, had those been removed, and I assume them to be too high, it would have switched it from 49-51 to 52-48. But you still could say it's a push. It's still said it was even. The bigger concern is if you considered, well, let me finish what I had for my first one. I'm sorry, I wandered onto the second. Top half of the second sheet shows how many votes it would be on a base of 400 voters. That's what was no votes. It occurred, it was 390, but I'm using 400 for my illustration. 5% of the, of these votes would have been 20, and had that been the case, 5% margin would have been 210 to 190, difference of 20 more voters for too low and 5% of the vote. I show examples all the way down to zero. If everyone voted and equally split their vote, it would have been 200 to 200 and, and there would be no difference. So I'm thinking that I would want at least 15 or more votes. I'm using that as an arbitrary call on my part. Others could say, I'll take it if it was one vote over. But the bigger point is, the number of the votes is not certain and doesn't follow the charter. But we want to look at it for some kind of influence. We look at the lower half. What I'm suggesting is that if 25 voters had voted no, did not answer the advisory question, and in turn, 25 voters had voted yes, too high, would have skewed it if you had removed those, because if we could find them, they should be removed, because that's not what the charter was asking for. Those had been removed, it would reduce the too high by 25 votes and would have been a 10% margin, 55 to 45. If they had been split evenly, it's remarkably close to if you took the 21 out and it's 52-48, too low. I'm not sure where the town is headed in terms of a charter change. Mayor, you were, you've been here the, for the time of the charter. I was on the first Board of Finance that came out of that charter revision. And we've had this situation for all eight years. It's, it's time to do something, whether that's change the question to three parts, which say, I vote yes, I vote no too high, no too low on each of the two. But the current way that the charter is written, that's at least in the spirit of the charter, the letter of the charter offers the yes, no, and then an opportunity to then vote on the advisory question. And whether people are confused or doing it purposefully, there are yes votes that are being cast on the advisory question, which are not what the charter is looking to gain.
So, yeah, on that point, we, we talked about it, the council, I think, last time that we talked about it? Yeah, so we got to change it. I, I think we recognize that. We, it's just been confusing from the beginning. I think folks are confused as the way the questions are, you know, written in the charter, from, from the charter revision. So that's what we're going to do. Won't be probably for this year, it'll probably end up being next year. But we got to, we got to fix it. It is too confusing, John. So, I mean, certainly, point taken. We already have looked at that. It's very hard to interpret, though, as you're interpreting things. We can't really interpret things. We have to do the best we can with, with the numbers.
With an advantage of seven.
Yeah.
And if they were legitimate.
Yeah.
Still would have called that a tie, and the tie should have been in favor of the runner. And I'm asking that the council consider restoring the $50,000 because of an unclear signal sent by the advisory question in terms of the results of this referendum. In addition.
At the first.
I have offered to assist in a review of the ballot counting. The problem is, we're not sure if the machines are able to give us a individual listing or if we would have to look at the ballots. The ballots have no voter identification on them, no Republican, Democrat, or name. It's really just to see what the magnitude of the problem is, and I would offer to assist in that regard if that would help the council. So I thank you for your time.
Yeah, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's, it's just confusing for everybody, and we've noted that the last few times. So we've done the best we can with interpreting. I mean, it is clear with this vote that, you know, they, both budgets were voted down. And the first time with the Board of Ed and the town, the town passed, and the Board of Ed was voted down by enough of votes to be significant and hence the lower, the lower amount. But we have a discussion, I think, in here tonight about this, so we'll, we'll have that later as we, as we go on. But still, an audience of citizens. So anyone else on anything other than the disc golf? Yes, sir, George.
George Miller, 1231 Orchard Road. I'm a member of the Board of Finance. John came and talked to us also. We agree wholeheartedly with him that it's skewed and whatever. Our perspective on it, though, I think, is that even if the numbers were all correct, if there were no yeses that voted on the other questions and there were no nos that hadn't answered, and those numbers were correct, we still don't have an answer, because the interpretation is ambiguous. So our conversation is looking at it as if it was an election, okay? There's three people running. Yes, I want the budget. No, it's too high. No, it's too low. Two questions. The town budget, Board of Education budget, highest number wins. No ambiguity. It's very clear. Two years ago, not this past budget, the one before, the very first referendum, BOE, was voted as being too low. But the no too low was collectively bigger than the other two numbers put together. So that was a clear mandate. It's our thought that also it needs a charter revision.
Yeah.
And the simplest thing, and then again, it needs some conversation, whatever. But if it was three, you know, three candidates, yes, no too high, no too low, two questions. It's clear. It's not ambiguous. Everybody should be able to understand it. Everybody won't like it. But the combinations of a no doesn't mean you have a mandate to make it too high, too low. Majority of the people did not vote for that. So I think that's, in the end, what we need to do.
Majority of people did not vote in that election or just in the whole town?
I mean, the majority of, not, a majority of people did not vote to increase the budget or lower the budget for the Board of Education.
Yeah.
You know, it was like 40 or 38% of the vote.
Yeah.
It wasn't the majority, whereas two years ago it was. And then we took that to heart and we did what we were supposed to do. But when we looked at this one, to John's point, it's like, the nos didn't really matter, because the yeses was, you know, was higher than either, either no, you know, whatever.
I think that, I think the nos.
Than the two no's put together. It was like 400 to 367.
With the Board of Ed?
On the board.
Yeah, yeah. The town, though, is pretty clear.
It's pretty clear.
Yeah, that.
It was also our premise, which we need to fix.
Yes.
Because I was on the charter commission when we wrote the stuff that's in there.
Yeah.
I know, Jeff, we had some issues with language about not being compliant to state statute. But it was clearly our intent that if either budget passed on the first referendum, that it not go back to revote.
But.
So we would not have sent the town budget back.
Yes.
That was our intent, but I understand, and I did a little research, too, and I understand.
Yeah, okay.
It's ambiguous and not clearly stated that they are being handled as two separate budgets. There are other towns that do that. It is very clear in their charters or whatever that they are two separate budgets that are being voted on. I don't know what you do with the revenue side of things for budgets like that, because there's two separate budgets on the expense side and capital side. They're not necessarily separate budgets on the revenue side.
Right.
I don't know how you bifurcate that or if you even need to, if we can write it correctly to do it, but that needs to be corrected also.
Just on that point, if Jeff could explain why we can't have two.
There's not two budgets. There's one budget.
Yes.
One mill rate.
Yeah.
There's one tax bill. There's one budget. If you look on the town of Berlin website, there's one budget. The Board of Education gets an appropriation under an account number, just like Public Works, Police, everybody else, right? So the bifurcation of the question is permitted by state law. The idea behind bifurcating the question is that if the budget fails, the fiscal authority, the Board of Finance, has guidance as to whether the budget failed because of Board of Ed or in this case, you get both the town government and the Board of Ed side failing. So the bifurcation of the question is fine, but the idea that there's a Board of Ed budget. The Board of Ed budget is, they get an appropriation, and under Title 10 of the general statutes, they spend that appropriation as they deem fit within their budget. That's not the Board of Ed budget we're talking about. We're talking about the number of the appropriation that gets set as a question on the ballot. So, you know, the majority of towns don't bifurcate the question, because they end up in this scenario where the parents get out and vote and the Board of Ed budget passes, but the town government doesn't. Or the seniors get out and vote and the town government budget passes and the Board of Ed doesn't. You know, there's towns like Monroe, for example, where they've had, you know, five, six referenda and they don't have a budget and they have to, under the statute, use last year's mill rate and send out tax bills without a budget. So, you know, certainly, it's something to talk about, but the idea is that there's, there's one town budget. And like I said, the bifurcation, there was a, there was a Connecticut Supreme Court case about 20 years ago involving Nogatuck. And the Nogatuck wanted to bifurcate the question. And the Board of Ed sued the town, claiming that the bifurcation was illegal because it interfered with the town's constitutional obligation to fund public education. And the Supreme Court ruled against them. But, you know, that's, the question of bifurcating the budget, there's no issue. That's legal. The question is, you know, do you have a budget if one of the questions is yes and one of, because you, what are you supposed to do with that? You can't set a mill rate. You don't have a budget.
If they were truly separate.
Right.
Yeah.
Then the dilemma becomes when first referendum it passes and the second referendum it fails, what if it's finance? What do we do?
Well, the charter is clear.
Charter is clear on, on what we do with that budget that didn't pass?
Yeah.
We don't have to do anything with it per the charter.
That's right.
One thing the charter is clear on, what happens if you're, because you don't have a budget, right? Even if you say, oh, we had a town government budget, it shouldn't have got, well, there were no changes made to the town government budget. It went, the Board of Ed budget was never approved, so there's no budget.
All right, well, let's fix the second part.
We need to fix. Thanks, George. Yeah, we, we all agree. We need to fix it. We will fix it going forward. Okay, so we're still in the audience of citizens. Anyone else, audience of citizens, other than the disc golf? No, no one, no hands online there. Kate? No hands online. Okay. Okay, so we'll go ahead and close the, uh, close the audience of citizens. Mayor's update real quick. Just a couple of things I wanted to update folks on. We, we had a couple meetings, well, two meetings, one, one public, one with the Board of Ed for anyone who has folks in the high school. We, you know, we determined a while ago, there were some issues with the flooring in the high school. After much study and a 54-page report from the folks that we hired. I guess when they built, when they renovated the high school as new, what, 10 years ago now? Some, somewhere in the, the specs for the glue that they used to glue the tile down to the cement slab, they chose a new product, a green product, green, green glue, I'll call it, for lack of a better term, that is a plant-based product, which when gets damp, when it's set on a slab that's damp, it grows mold, unfortunately. And no, no one knew that. It was a new product. And the funny thing is, the company that made it is out of business, interesting enough. So now there's issues with the tiles, some of the tiles in the high school. You can see the glue. Now that, all the flooring is sealed. You could see the green and some of the glue, you know, but it is all sealed, so there's no mold spores or anything that is detected in, in the air. So it's safe right now, but what we have to do, what we're going to do as quickly as possible, it's just not that quick a scenario, is we're going to replace certainly all the tiles on the main floor that's, that are on the slab, on the ground. It's, it's not showing any issues on the upper deck, because there's no mold, right? It's, there's no slab. It's not wet underneath. It's above, you know, it's the second floor of the high school, basically. We'll probably replace all those, too, but there's no green showing through any of those. There is green showing in the classrooms and in the hallway. So we're going to take the ones that are showing the green this summer as fast as we can. We're hiring a contractor now to rip those up. We'll put replacements down temporarily and seal the slab underneath. And ultimately, all of them will be picked up. It will seal the slab. I think parts of it were sealed. I think we're finding out some of the other parts of the slab, which has been there since the 50s, was not sealed when they redid the high school. And so some other issues there. But we're, we're going to fix it going forward. There's no danger anyone. We also, you know, we, we didn't meet with the union president for the teachers and the principal at the high school and the superintendent, and went through this, too, with them privately. They also talked about the, the consultants who were at the last Board of Ed meeting and spoke about it. I think the report's online, if, if you want to read it. So, yeah, we're moving forward to fix that. But just so you know, if you hear anything about it, it's, you know, under control. We're going to get it fixed. It's going to take probably a couple summers, because we can't start ripping those things up during the school year, nor do we want to. There's a few things, if, if we had to do it, we would have to cordon off the hallway and, and make sure we get certain equipment, equipment in there to make sure the mold, when we rip up a tile, doesn't get into the air. So we, the decision would be not to do that during the school year, because it's sealed. We're going to do some of it this summer, as I mentioned. And we'll do testing again, and we'll get through the next school year, and then we'll do probably the bulk of it next summer with the contractor. So that's just something, if you hear that out there, we, we're on it. It's a number one priority to get that done for the, obviously, the, the safety and health of our, our school. And it's unfortunate that, that was the product that was chosen, but no track record in it and on it, on that particular glue. And obviously, like I said, the company's out of business, so apparently, it's not, not working too well anywhere. It's certainly not working for Berlin. And the cost of that, probably about a million dollars. So that's what we're going to have to spend on a relatively new high school for, you know, whatever the contractor did. Or I don't know where the choices all came from back then, but not, not a good choice. I also wanted to mention, I just wanted to mention the, which one were we talking about, Ryan? I forgot. Which were we, oh, the senior. Yeah, the, the senior housing is, is going forward finally. We've been trying to get senior housing up for years. It's a very difficult problem, because the financing, first of all, the first problem we met on the nights of Columbus property is where we want to put the housing up. We realized there was an easement there that even planning and zoning did not notice with the state. There's a state easement there, because there's some wetlands on a corner of. of where we were gonna build the first building we were talking about. So that took about two years to get the state to approve what we needed to do on that site. That was two years of uh, effort. Uh, so then it, then I guess the federal government and the state government, we want the the housing on the Knights of Columbus to be all for seniors, right? Over typically over fifty-five, over sixty, we didn't, we don't want anyone else there under that age that's senior housing. But with the financing that is necessary from the federal and the state government, where most of it comes from, they don't, they don't want to call it senior housing anymore. They want anyone, they want to call it affordable, so folks under sixty, under fifty-five could also rent there. That's not what the purpose of that was, is we're trying to get some more senior housing for our seniors in town. So that that took a while, a couple tries at financing did not work. Uh, and then there was the final try, which didn't work either for a lot of different reasons, which we determined, thank goodness for our town attorney, and actually the, before we closed on the property the last time, um, that we just realized that the Wells Fargo Trust, which is where this supposed money was coming from, that we were borrowing, was a fake organization, it was, it's been uh, there's fraud cases all around the country with this Wells Fargo Trust. It's a bunch of people going around scamming towns and other folks to to do this, so we didn't transfer title, nothing happened, thank God, we figured it out. The FBI is investigating around the country this scam, and also was looking into the one that happened for us, unfortunately. So they fooled a lot of towns around the country. We didn't fall for it, no money changed hands, we still have the title of the property. We're now at the final uh, point here, we have a company we located. Uh, Vesta, they're out of Simsbury, they build senior housing, they have the um, the way to get the they they go through, it's kind of a complicated way to finance it, it's through tax credits, but it's gonna work, we're in contract negotiation with them, they have to just go to planning and zoning for a couple little fixes. Uh, but the good thing is, we should be ready to build later this year, and they're gonna build seventy units instead of the original fifty that we were looking at. So we're, there'll be more units, and they have a, uh, we we really vetted this company and a good track record. They they build them all around the country, as well as in Connecticut. And the nice thing about them is they keep it, they own it, and they manage it, you know. Obviously, the, you know, we'll we'll be overseeing that, but um, they have a very good track record. So that's where we're at, we're we're very close to getting that that project started, which is uh, which is a good thing, finally. Wasn't easy, as you noted, it probably took us, we're probably on year number eight, seven or eight, something like that, with all kind of trouble in between, but we're there. Um, and then there was the Senior Center, Community Center, we've heard about that, we've talked about the YMCA. The council ultimately took a vote, we went through a lot of, a lot of studies, a lot of homework. Um, with with an indoor pool, was the town gonna build it, or, you know, was it too expensive? And we we went all around the state, we had a special committee that went all around the state looking for, you know, different towns that have done it. Uh, most of the towns are not doing too good financially, that that built built an indoor pool with it with a community center. Some are, want to close it down, it's costing them a lot of money. Uh, so ultimately, with all the research we did, everything we looked at, the council, I don't know, what, a couple months ago now, maybe? Three, two, three months ago, voted not to have the town do it, we're talking probably about a, I don't know, thirty million dollar project, which which would, you know, which is obviously very expensive. Uh, and then with indoor pool, you're probably talking another million to two million a year carrying costs for the indoor pool and for the staff and everyone else, so. Quite a hit to your taxes, folks, so the YMCA has been pursuing the town. They came to us a while ago, obviously, the YMCA is in town, we have daycare provided by the YMCA in Hubbard and in McGee. They do different things, uh, you know, they do a lot of things uh, in the town, there's camps they provide. So we decided to look at the YMCA, we're in negotiations with them, they will build an indoor pool, and hopefully a gym and some other other things that the Y brings to town. Uh, it will be on town land, it'll be in the same location across from the high school. It would be a pool that our swim team could use, just like any other Y, our swim team now uses the Meriden Y to do their swim meets. And uh, it would be, of course, on their dime, we would lease the property to them, they're a nonprofit, um, and they would build a building and they would maintain it, just like the New Britain Y, just like the Meriden Y, they're part of that New Britain, Berlin, Meriden, it's all the same. And that would be at no cost to the um, to the town, right? It's the Y they're coming in, and of course, we talked about membership, some people brought up membership. Well, most of the towns that own the building, that have an indoor pool, charge their residents membership. The Y, most of, you know, the seniors at least would be, uh, would not have to pay because most seniors are part of the Silver Sneaker Program, um, through Medicare, through their insurance, so they would not have to pay to join, and uh, you know, so it would be saving our seniors. And we would keep the community center at Percival. So we'd have the YMCA with the indoor pool and some other function rooms, and probably a gym too. Uh, at the Y expense, the town will lease them the land for fifty years, and we'd still have the Senior Center. And, you know, if you go to the New Britain Y or the Meriden Y, Monday through Friday, nine to five, it's mostly seniors and some folks with little children, you know, but the rest are in school or working, so. I think it'll be a good fit for the town, the Y wants to come to Berlin, we didn't pursue them, they came to us, they want to build, and so the council agreed, so we're in negotiations with them to to get that going, we'll see how it goes. And most people I've spoken to are in favor of it. A lot of folks growing up in Berlin is my, I did, and my son did, my son went to Plainville Y when he wanted to play basketball on on Saturdays, right? And a lot of people do go, Sutherland has a Y, the same thing, um, so, again, uh, much less, no expense to the taxpayer. Uh, and all we, we all remember, this is, we're talking about a thirty, forty million dollar building. If the town builds it, the Y, you know, same for them, but they're gonna fundraise and they they, you know, they're gonna do the same thing. Uh, but um, you know, it's it's not gonna be in our taxes. And as we recall, if you recall, there was two referendums, some people have said, let's bring it to referendum, which we could do, and maybe we do that. Um, do we want the town to build it, or we want the Y to build it? But remember, we tried to build a police station at Farmington Avenue, we went to two referendums before my time on the council, but it got voted down twice, and it was a twenty million dollar project got voted down, and then it was, I think it was a sixteen million dollar project that voted down. So my fear is if we go to the vote for a community center and it's thirty million dollars, I really doubt if folks are gonna vote for that when they realize that's at least a two, three mil increase right there in your taxes, when the Y will build the same building without us incurring those expenses and the carrying costs going forward for forty years. So that's just kind of the latest update, but we'll update everybody in council meetings as we go. And I I I kind of went through all that because there's a little bit of an audience here, there's just a lot of false information that seems to float around out on social media, as with every topic, not just this topic. So I like to keep the, you know, you guys updated on where we're at, and and certainly, you're welcome to any council meeting, you have questions on anything, we talk about on our agendas. We want you to come here, like, I'm happy people are here to talk about the disc golf, believe it or not, we're all happy because we want your input, you know, you're you elected us to be here, and we want to hear all your thoughts, and then we try and make the best decision, so. That's why we try and keep you guys up to date, so that's the, that's that's what I had to put out there for today. So with that in mind, let's move on to our consent agenda. Uh, we've got several items on our consent agenda, and uh, we've all read them before, and we'll go ahead and take a vote on those, take a motion.
I move, we accept the consent agenda as presented.
All right, thank you, second?
Second.
Thank you, uh, any other comments or questions on those? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so move. All right, so now we have one quick public hearing, folks, I'm sorry, we're uh, trying to move forward, we're getting to the disc golf, we're getting there quickly, because we can. Uh, so what do we have here, Kate, we have a public hearing.
Just to just open it, um, and have the notice of the public hearing attached to the minutes. You can of course identify that it's a, you know, for the neighborhood constituents, and.
We have the reading, yeah?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, we'll go ahead and uh, we'll go ahead and open the uh, the public hearing at uh, I guess we're at seven forty-five. And the purpose of the public hearing, uh, we're conducting a public hearing Tuesday, June third, twenty twenty-five, at seven P M, to discuss the twenty twenty-five Connecticut Neighborhood Assistance Act Tax Credit Program, and to solicit citizen input, the meeting can be assessed via Zoom. And please refer the website, and just to, just a couple lines on it, it's a credit program, provides tax credit to business firms that make cash investments in in qualifying community programs. And we have uh, the organizations that have proposals this year, the Prudence Crandall Center, Berlin Lions Charities, and C C A R C. And this would, so what, what do you?
I could.
Yes.
Charlie, just move to attach the public hearing notice to the minutes, please.
I move to have the public hearing minutes notice.
Notice, attached to the minutes.
Attached to the minute.
Second, thank you.
Thank you, uh, all's in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed, all right, some some move. All right, so now, Kate, would it, just the public comments and the?
Yeah, I think we had the public comment on the um, and this would be on the um, Neighborhood Assistance.
Yes.
Public hearing.
Yes, if there's any comments on this, now would be your time, town council comments too?
No.
Any town council comments, I don't think it'd be online. Okay, so we'll go ahead and close the public hearing on that one, and move on to the uh, the second public hearing, which I'm guessing some of you are here for. So uh, we'll go ahead and open this public hearing. Uh, the town council, the town of Berlin will meet at Berlin Town Hall, Council Chambers, two hundred forty Kensington Road, uh, on Tuesday, June third, twenty twenty-five, seven P M, for the purpose of holding an informed public hearing. The public is invited to comment on the proposed creation of a disc golf course inside the trails of Pistol Creek. So that's the purpose, so we are here for public comments, here we are, we finally made it. Yes. Okay, so, we'll we'll take this person first, and uh, and it's George, it's number one again, look at that. Um, so after George, and if all of you, I don't know how many wish to speak, um, if you could limit it, you know, we, I don't know how many people speak, but about three minutes tops, if you would, when you get up to speak, huh? Can't do in three minutes, speak, talk fast, go ahead, you go a little bit longer, but. Yeah. Sure, yeah, absolutely, yeah, yeah, yeah.
My name is George Millard, I reside at twelve thirty-one Orchard Road in Kensington. First, I'd like to start by thanking the town council for having this public hearing on the disc out proposal and taking the time and effort to listen to the thoughts of Berlin residents. Our town manager shared some information with me, I appreciate everything you sent me, Ryan. I'd also like to thank Steve Woods for all the effort and time he has put into bringing this proposal forward. I think Berlin is very fortunate to have Steve working for the town, I appreciate what he does. First, I want to say that I do not have reservations about um, disc golf in in Berlin. I went out and bought my first two clubs today.
There we go.
With you later.
Throw one over here, no, no, let's not start that, no, 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 let's not do that.
Not want me after you.
No, that's okay, that's all right, we're good.
Um, I do have, um, I think it would be a great addition to the town, but I do have a few reservations about the scope of the project that's proposed for Pistol Creek. I'll just give you some food for thought. My concerns fall into two categories, which I'll discuss. My first concern is how this impacts the existing users of the park and how it's used today. And the second concern is regarding ensuring the safety of the many residents who frequent Pistol Creek in the event that we do have um, a golf, a disc golf course. Concerns about existing existing users. For the past seventeen years, the former Pistol Creek Golf Course has blossomed into a beloved and vital community asset, exclusively serving as a serene and safe walking and jogging park. I utilize this park four to five times a day, even through the winter. Park gets a fair amount of use during the week, but it explodes during the weekends, hey? Especially if the weather is really nice, that parking lot is jammed. Um, hundreds of residents use this park on a regular basis. Usage goes beyond just walking the cart paths. Um, I see a lot of children there getting their first experience riding bikes, a safe environment on the cart paths. Many people walk through the open fairways when they're dry and not wet, and you see a lot of people doing that. Kids, parents kicking sock and balls or playing frisbee. Um, there are horses that come into the park quite often. Two weeks ago, I think it probably was Nero, he was in there with a wagon with two horses pulling his wagon throughout the park. But frequently, I think, uh, from Mattson's farm, they're in there quite quite a bit, see the evidence, unfortunately.
Yeah.
But um, a little bit. Um, and then Brit- winter brings out snowshoe cross-country skiing enthusiasts, so usage is well beyond just walking and jogging. I think his traditionally, you know, um, there's no limit to when you can play disc golf. You can play in the winter because you're not really hitting off the ground, I don't know if that would be at our intent, but you can. So a lot of these courses are open through the winter too. Um, our park is unique, it's one of the few places where residents can safely enjoy uninterrupted walks, runs, and quiet reflection, free from the concerns of active sports projectiles. Uh, while Biocentennial Park and the surrounding trails offer a similar experience, um, it is much more difficult for some of our seniors to navigate, ups and downs, the trails, whatever, they're all dirt. Introducing golf will fundamentally alter this experience. Um, one of the things that Anna and I have done, we go there quite often with our dogs, is, you know, we started doing the bunny counting on all of our, all of our visits through. Um, we started out slow, it started like two and three, we're up to ten, then we got to eight, uh, ten, and then fifteen. Last year, the max was twenty-five, uh, cotton tails running around. So if you read stuff, this impacts wildlife too. It scares the wildlife off the fairways and so, there are deer in there, there are foxes in there, there are rabbits in there, there's all kinds of birds in there, I'm sure there's possum, raccoon, and everything under the sun. It does have some impact on it, I'm not saying how much, I don't know, but it's noted that they do. So where will people who use the park for activities other than walk and go once disc golf starts? Um, the proposal effectively takes away a critical recreation output from a portion of our population, many who rely on this space for daily exercise and mental well-being. Seventy to eighty percent of the park could be co-opted by the disc golf uh, golf course by this endeavor, if you look at the available real estate. Quiet, peaceful atmosphere will be replaced by the sounds and activity of competitive sport. This impacts not only the experience, but potentially accessibility for those seeking a more tranquil environment. Question, will introducing disc golf fundamentally alter and degrade this experience and is it fair to the existing users? I don't know the answer to that, but it's a question. Hey, now to the safety risks, switching gears. My direct concern is that there is inherent and dangerous conflict between active disc golf play and passive pedestrian use. Disc golf involves high speed, sometime unpredictable erratic projectiles. Our park's users, seniors, young children, families, dog walkers, share the exact same space where this disc could be flying. This was designed as a golf course, the golf cart paths are an integral part of course. Lot of us, over the seventeen years, a lot of the open space on this course has been left to grow in, you see trees and brush that's quite big. We've lost a lot of the free space from the golf course of seventeen years ago, and so just keep that in mind. We don't have as much open free space as we used to have as seventeen years ago, okay? Any course design needs to really provide abundant buffer space between the disc golf course and the heavily heavily used pedestrian walking trails in order to ensure pedestrian safety. I I'd like to just elaborate on uh, some of the potential dangers based on the sport. Disc golf, disc golf mirrors mirrors regular golf to a large degree. Primarily, users carry more than one disc. They really typically can carry six, ten, some carry even twenty, they all have different characteristics to them. I went in Dick's today to buy it, there's a rack of fifty, fifty of these in rows, all different. Every single one of them has a different characteristic, okay? So it's not, it it's not trivial. Um, there's distance drivers, these are the fastest discs, this is a distance driver. Um, they're designed for maximum distance, controlled flight, fairway drivers like a three or four wood. Um, you know, better balance control, suitable for longer throws with more accuracy. Mid-range discs like irons, you know, shorter distances, whatever, more control. Then there's putters, this is a putter, short distances, very accurate, whatever, for throwing short distances. I brought two examples of me, a distance driver and a putter, that I'd like to pass around. One thing I want you to know on the orange is, this is not a frisbee, okay? This is not playing frisbee in the park, this is pretty serious stuff that's being tossed around. The model, the orange one, is a Inova Shriek. According to Inova, advanced players with consistent practice and technique can expect to throw this disc three hundred and seventy-five to four hundred feet.
Wow.
Okay, three hundred and seventy-five to four hundred feet. For many recreational players, the average drive falls between two hundred and three hundred feet. As an aside, the world record by a pro for for using a distance driver is one thousand one hundred and eighty feet. Okay, so if you know what you're doing, these things can go a real long distance. Let's talk about speed and accuracy. The average speed of a disc drive is fifty to sixty miles an hour for recreational players. More experienced and stronger players can exceed, can achieve speeds of up to fifty to seventy-five miles an hour. So how about accuracy in errant throws? The probability of an errant throw increases as a skill of the player. So how about accuracy in errant throws? The probability of an errant throw increases as the skill of the player decreases, okay? For top players, they probably have pretty good control, but as you've seen, if you've ever watched PGA golf, even the best players lose one way right or one, one left every once in a while, way off the rails, like the deal. The other issue is that disc manufacturers make different discs suited for skill levels. A disc requiring a high skill level in the hands of an inexperienced player leads to a lot of errant shots. If the objective is that this course to be open to public and it's for free or really low cost, I'd expect a lot of inexperienced players to use it, so risk goes up a little bit. I bought these discs at Dick's Sporting Goods, okay? If you looked at the orange one on the bottom, there's four numbers on the bottom of it, okay? They're thirteen slash six, mi- slash minus two slash two, okay? These are the characteristics of the disc. Speed, glide, turn, and fade, okay? I won't go into what they are. The important part is, I asked three members of Dick's, Dick's, what they meant. Not a single one knew what that meant, okay? So I like orange. I bought the orange one, okay? Later, I found that this disc requires an advanced level of skill to fly it correctly, okay? So how many novices are gonna walk into Dick's, buy the wrong thing because I like this color, and start playing with the wrong equipment? Because there's nobody there actually to let them know what the hell's going on. When I first bought this driver disc, again, for an average guy, three to, two to three hundred, or the average first, two to three hundred, I'm, I'm a novice, whatever, I couldn't throw it more than twenty, hundred and twenty feet, okay, on about ten throws. Also, I was consistently forty to fifty feet offline, okay? Everything's going right, everything. I couldn't throw it straight to save my life. Now, I've not practiced with it either, but I'm an inexperienced disc thrower. This is what happens. I shared all this because I want to press upon you that's absolutely critical. Adequate buffer space needs be maintained between course, course players and walking paths in order to ensure that Pistol Creek's large walking, the safety of Pistol Creek's large walking community. I hate to be having, walking down one of these paths with my two-year-old granddaughter and see one of these things come flying at me at fifty miles an hour. And I would say, if you look at the orange one, if you tried to catch it, you'd probably break your hand at fifty miles an hour because it's a very rigid, you know, pretty, not sharp-sharp, but very tightly beveled surface on it. They're not made for catching, okay? The designer of this course, from my understanding, which is information Mr. Curly gave me, is Ron Lemire. Ron's a professional disc golf player and a member of the Professional Disc Golf Association or the PDGA, and owns a disc golf course design company. I believe he had a lot of input into the design of our course. So I thought I'd start with the PDGA, um, to start researching, researching what was a reasonable amount of buffer space to have. The only statement they really have is, fairways should not cross or be too close to public streets, sidewalks, paths, bike trails, pavilions, playgrounds, private property, or any other multi-use area, non-players congregating, period. That's it. That's the level of guidance for course design from the PDGA. I then turn, I u- I, I use a lot of artificial intelligence, I find them to be very fascinating and interesting. I use both Google's AI, Artificial Intelligence Engine, and ChatGPT, and I asked them about what they thought to, to go through all their data and all the things they could find on the internet and summarize what they thought was reasonable. Their answer was, recommended buffer distances. These depend on the skill level of expected players and the viability and terrain, but a good baseline is, a minimum buffer between fairways and walking paths. The ideal is a hundred and fifty to two hundred feet. Okay, that's ideal, especially on the throwing side of right-handed players, the most common throwing direction. One hundred meters or, one hundred feet or thirty meters can be acceptable with line of sight visibility, low player power, not high-end experts, okay? And the use of signage and fencing to let people know what's going on. Fifty feet or fifteen meters may be used in very low traffic, low-power situations, only with additional safety mitigations, okay? So I'd like to go to this map for a minute and just point out a couple of things. I walked Pistol Creek, and I measured a bunch of things. I clearly didn't measure everything that was there, but take in mind these parameters about minimally fifty feet with a lot of precautions and only, you know, low-level users, a hundred feet with a lot of different signage and whatever, or, you know, a hundred and fifty to two hundred feet ideally as a very good, good buffer. If you look at the map that I gave you, if you start at hole one, um, hole one at one point is only ninety feet wide. That's the distance from the edge of the cart path going into the fairway to all the brush on the other side. Ninety feet, that's it, okay, period. You're gonna need to use anywhere, you probably need a minimum of about forty feet of that for an adequate fairway for the disc golf, which leaves you with a two-foot, you know, buffer zone, period. Now, that's only if you were to mark off the forty feet and somehow make say everything else outside that is out of bounds, you know, like white stakes on an old golf course. If you did that, then you'd have a fifty-foot buffer. If you're playing down the middle, you have no buffer, essentially, okay? Fairway two, at one point, um, the lowest part is a hundred feet wide. This never gets any wider than like a hundred and twenty feet, but there's a big neck in there that's only a hundred feet wide. Fairways threes and fours, by the stuff I read, both of those are too close to houses. Should be minimally about a hundred and fifty to two hundred feet away from anybody's property line. There's, there's houses pretty much adjacent to where these are, they stick up on the hill, okay? Fairway five, when you get down by the trap, uh, this is before the path is gonna go across the bridge, you know, where the two hoops intersect, and there's a fair, uh, uh, a green that you can see there. It's only seventy-three feet from the path, okay? Uh, fairway fourteen on the other side, again, I didn't do all these, um, actually, I think it's fairway, it's actually fairway thirteen. When you're first starting out, you can see where the, the yellow line comes close to the cart path. Um, the entire distance there, that, the width there is only seventy-five feet, okay? When we get to eighteen, I don't, I don't know what the thought there is, unless it's gonna be a significant amount of, uh, clearing, even though it's only a par three, there's only forty-five feet of space there between the, the shrubs and the pathway, okay? There's others, if you look at them, you can just tell by looking at them, like fifteen, sixteen, uh, parts of ten, they're all very close to the pathways. So, I, I want to give you food for thought. I have, I have a suggestion. It's my own personal opinion, and that's all it is, is personal opinion. It's eighteen holes does not fit in this footprint, okay? You, if you look at the map, you have a lot of land in Pistol Creek, a lot of it's overgrown. You also look, if you look at a lot of golf cour-, a lot of disc golf courses, they're carved through the woods and brush and things like that, okay? Which gives you an added protection. They're only like, some instances, fifteen to forty feet wide, where you're throwing through the trees. You're errant, it's going into the trees. It's not going into a pathway with a lot of people on it. But you do, I'm not saying to do this right away, but I think if, if you, you could lay out a course to get eighteen holes in here, but I think it's gonna take some work to carve out some of this underbrush and things like that and put it more in state than it was seventeen years ago. If you look way over on, on the left-hand side where you see holes, you know, like twelve, eleven, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, ten, whatever, and, and maybe sprinkle one or two, you, you also have a little bit of space on the other side of the road where there used to be a par three and some land that comes up behind the clubhouse. You've got a pretty wide, open space there. I, I think if you thought about it, looked at what your buffer should be, draw the, drew those buffers out and then started, you could probably fit a nine-hole course in there. And that's what my recommendation on, on what you really should try to do. I think this as set up right now, I think it's gonna be problematic. And I know we got insurance, but the insurance isn't gonna help anybody whose kid just got whacked in the head with a driver disc, okay, or, or an elderly person that got, and, and I know some research was done asking about whether there were any, many accidents in, in Connecticut or not. First of all, out of the sixty golf courses, how many of them are in public spaces where they share pathways? I don't know, that wasn't in there. I think a lot of them are not in public pathways. Some of them are in public pa- park, parks, but they're in dedicated areas. That's not what we have here. We have it coexisting with heavily used pathways, okay? It, but we do have a lot of open space, and you may be able to fit a nine-hole course in. I just think it's dangerous to try to fit an eighteen-hole course in. I thank you for your time, and I would like you to build a nine-hole, uh, one of my first two clubs. Any questions or anything?
Questions, folks?
No.
No?
Oh, I, I gave you a couple. I had one for you and.
Thank you.
Yeah. You can have all this if you want it, okay?
Thank you. Thank you.
Alright, thank you, George. Okay, uh, that's the only one on the list. Who is next? Yes, sir.
Uh, Peter Zerbozo, one five eight Elwood Road. Uh, Mr. Miller does bring up some good points, um, and I do want to address some of them. Uh, first off, um, disc golf is a very accessible sport, cheap to play, um, good for the youth. It, it's very laid-back, recreational, against the kids outside. There is no real, uh, cost barrier to it. You don't need a set of clubs and a bag and, uh, paying, uh, tee fees and so on and so forth. I am not a golfer and I'm not a disc golfer. I have played a little bit way in the past, but I'm terrible at both sports, so I gave it up. But, um, in terms of safety, there are some things to consider, especially because we do have some similar setups in this town already. Um, I frequently use Timberland Park, much at the request of my toddler, and I also use, uh, Pistol Creek. In Timberland Park, the boundary of the golf course is parallel to the walking path. The walking path itself is about point six miles of open exposure to the fairway of hole ten and hole eleven. And on, uh, Marjory Moore Road to the other side, not including the parking lot, you're also exposed for another point fifteen miles for about three-quarters of a mile. I'm there frequently, I see elderly, I see toddlers, I see people walking their dogs, pushing kids in their car, so on and so forth, every evening. I do not see people panicked about being hit by a golf ball, despite the fact that being hit by a golf ball has a higher risk of lethality and severe injury than a disc does. There was a study done out of, uh, Columbus, Ohio by a pediatric physician, and over the span of twenty-one years, there are about three hundred and twenty thousand golf-related injuries, okay? Annually, that breaks down to about thirty thousand. Of those thirty thousand, sixteen percent, or forty-eight hundred, are golf ball-related, okay? Golf balls, even the most amateur player, even our youth that uses that course, can hit a golf ball at seventy miles an hour, with the average golf ball traveling at a hundred and thirty, with pros hitting it at a hundred and eighty. So, for context in terms of direct impact and safety, there's a study done by, uh, Sports Biomechanics in regards to the safety of actual discs. I don't know if they're the same one Mr. Miller brought, but they are disc golf, uh, rated discs. When you're studying impact, you're looking at something known as HIC, which is Head Injury Criteria. This is something used in the automotive industry, sports industry, football, so on and so forth. What is the likelihood of a concussive impact or severe head injury? So, in order to get a concussive injury, you're looking at an HIC of about two hundred and fifty. That is what a baseball traveling sixty miles an hour directed at your head would create. When they conduct this study, they're using a crash test dummy, just like they would an automotive vehicle, and they launch the item at the head and measure it by, uh, with accelerometers. With that said, um, they use two different discs, one traveling at forty miles per hour and another traveling at sixty. It's important to keep in mind that that's approximately the average speed of a disc. Um, I know George talked about the distance, but we have to think about the speed. Um, the average throw is about between forty and sixty. The best disc golf player in the world, from what I read, cannot even throw it faster than ninety miles an hour, for reference. So what is the HIC of a disc hitting someone laterally in the head like this at a speed of forty and sixty miles an hour? It is point six and eleven point five respectively. The study concluded that these low HIC values are so far below the current regulatory limits in automotive crash severities, is to be considered negligible. Um, while the potential, uh, for conflict between disc golfers and other park users may exist, the findings of this study should nonetheless be encouraging to recreation park directors interested in installing a disc golf course. It is reasonable to assume that the likelihood of sustaining a structural head injury from being struck, uh, with a baseball is far greater than a flying golf disc, uh, while being played on a disc golf course. And I want to reiterate that the town and community already uses a walking trail recreational space in an environment that is factually and arguably more dangerous, being Timberland Park, I use it myself, knock on wood. Um, and no one is turning away from Timberland Park and not using it out of fear of a golf ball. I don't see people, uh, fleeing, uh, Pistol Creek out of fear of a flying disc either. And I think that there is a very, lastly, I think there's a very common misconception with the, with the sport, um, because you associate with golf, you have a golf course on a piece of land, the golf course becomes kind of the authoritative body of that land. You're not gonna go to Timberland, walk across a golf course, you're gonna get chased off the course and yelled at. Um, disc golf, really, in all instances that I've seen in local parks, almost operates on like a secondary, uh, secondary priority. The users of these parks are not, uh, use, uh, coming through a golf course frequently. It's not gonna be utilized as, uh, uh, frequently as like, uh, Timberland is, and I think that disc golf is inherently secondary to the passive recreation usage of other people on these trails and walkways, and there are plenty of examples in the state of Connecticut that exemplify that. So, I hope that provides some information. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Next up? Come on up.
My name is Toby Schneijler, I live on one twenty Wines app. Um, I would just like to agree with him regarding the secondary space. A lot of disc golf is very community and etiquette-based. It is very well put out there in the community, whether it's a sign at the course or just by word of mouth. If there's anyone near, you let them pass. You wait until they're well away, a safe distance away, in order to throw. If you're second-guessing it, you wait a little bit longer. So, there are multiple times where I've been to a disc golf course, just within twenty-five minutes, you have Wickham. Wickham Park is a disc golf course that also has cross-country meets, um, walkers, Center Springs in Manchester as well, Page Park in Bristol, Rockwell in Bristol, Nichols Fields in East Ham, Haddam, and more. Norbrook has a mountain biking trail, weaved throughout the course. Like said before, we're secondary. Everything else has priority. Walkers, pedestrians, the bikers, they take priority for us because we want to foster that safety. We are grateful to be a part of a community, to be a part of a park. We don't want to take that away from you guys. Um, additionally, our motto is, leave it how you left it, or leave it how you, uh, came there for. So, me and many other people are constantly bringing trash bags to make sure that it's clean. We go out of our way to make sure that our fairways are safe. We volunteer, we do many, many workdays. I myself am more than willing to volunteer, as well as many other people that couldn't be here today, to help maintain, to make sure that this environment is a safe environment, for not just the disc golfers, but for everybody else as well. Um, I also have a lot of interest in advocacy for alternate, um, abilities, and I view Pistol Creek as a very accessible space where we can be one of the first places in Connecticut that is able to have different abilities, people, whether it's amputees, physical disabilities, multiple others, have a course where they can go to and they can actually play. There are a lot of barriers at these other courses that I listed that stop them, whether it's the terrain, rough terrain, or the, um, elevation changes. Pistol Creek doesn't have that. So, there are many ways that we can open up a, a community to even more people, which I think is amazing. But, um, I've been playing for five years, I played professionally for two years now, and when I heard that there was possibly gonna be a disc golf course, I felt proud for the town. It's, it's a sense of pride because now I can say, oh, yeah, I have a disc golf course in my town, or I, I, we might have a disc golf course in the town, um, because I feel like I'm a part of the community. Like I said before, volunteering, I'm more than welcome to, are more than happy to volunteer my time with the maintenance and the safety, and that also comes with the pride. Um, I don't know, I'm done, so.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Yes, sir.
I just would like to. Scott Skates, 23 Oakridge Drive. I just would like to back up what George Miller had said. I've been a resident of Berlin for twenty-five years. Been walking on the trail for seventeen years, stood in this very room seventeen years ago with my son in my arms, fought for that piece of property to get taken away from the developer that was trying to put low-income housing or whatever he had. He came with some kind of, you know, story for us. So the property means a lot to me and the neighbors that were involved in that, so I have nothing against disc golf. Like I said, I walk there all the time, dogs. I love the, you know, I guess I'm taking it on as a, it's sort of like, I feel like it's mine because of how we fought for that. The quietness, the ability to walk without any kind of interruptions is just a beautiful piece of land. The other things that nobody's mentioned here about disc golf, golf. He mentioned about the golf course. If you don't want to go walk near a golf course, then don't go walk near the golf course. So he was kind of comparing this. You can't be at a safer place to walk right now. They had mentioned with the kids, there's no cars coming sideways. It's just a very quiet, peaceful place. What I, the first thing that I had mentioned to somebody at work about disc golf, and they saw it online, and they said, oh, I have a couple buddies that play, and this is going to take people by, you know, or whatever. I said, oh, yeah, a couple friends of mine play. They get stoned and they go play. Just giving you what my quick take was. People golf, drink beers, smoke pot, do whatever. Pistol Creek is quiet. We don't smell pot. We don't see people drinking. It's primarily exercisers and walkers. So when you bring in sports, not, it doesn't even have to be disc golf, whatever it may be. You bring in a guy with a six-pack, somebody with pot, and now we've got that whole piece of something at the golf course, along with the possibility of, it doesn't pass any of the, whatever it was, the PGGA. I mean, you don't need to see any more rules. Pistol Creek is, at some points, is wide, less than the width of this building. So there's no way that some of these spots are going to work. As far as I'm saying, there might be plenty of land. Pistol Creek is also covered with wetlands all through there. So maybe you can carve some out, but you're going to be getting into the wetland areas, and that's not going to be beneficial either. So instead, I have nothing against disc golf. I have nothing against people doing their sports. It just doesn't fit there. I don't understand why it would even be pushed on a place that's already, like he had mentioned, parking lots full. There's no more space there for an additional cars, traffic, people. So anyway, that's my two cents worth. And like I said, it's, it adds something to my heart because I like walking there. I have nothing against golf, the sport, or whatever. I just don't see it fitting in there, so.
Thank you. Thank you. Next up, Joan in the back, then, then you're next.
So I'd like to start off with stating my name. Owen Benson, 360 Savage Hill Road. I'd like to agree with you and also you about the safety concerns. But another thing that you mentioned was the drinking and the hot smoking. That's definitely another concern. We all know what happens in every other sport. People do it, and then they fly off and whatever happens after that happens. But another concern for, as far as disc golf goes, for the people who live on Circlewood, Savage Hill, flying discs going into houses, for one example, that could very easily shatter a window, landing in, you know, some just simply playing with their dog and kids in the backyard could hit the kid in the head, or, you know, just anything like that. So I'd like to also know where you're getting the funding, what all this end for, the baskets, the tees. You know, just basic stuff like that. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Just so, so to just answer the funding question, so I don't, we don't forget. The, the funding was coming out of park and rec budget. That's just for some temporary, that would be, you know, if, if it goes forward, I don't, I'm not saying it is, I'm just saying if it did, there's some temporary baskets. They wouldn't be permanently installed. It would be a trial period if we decide to do that. That would be first, and there would be nothing permanent. So that's just, it's not a large purchase of several thousand dollars for the temporary stuff from the park and rec budget, if, if we decide to go that route. So anyway, next. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Lewis Hu, 438 Savage Hill Road in Berlin. We're right above the back of the proposed course. I think one of the holes is actually right by our house. And to George's point, I don't think you're going to make those enough with the buffer zone. And I agree with everything that this man said. I thank God that you showed up tonight. Because I think he just laid out all the relevant points for this thing. I just, you know, I love playing sports. I played sports my whole life, but this just doesn't belong there. You know, it's quiet, serene. There's old folks walking. There's young people walking. I had no idea that those discs fly that fast. I was thinking it's just a frisbee. And I mean, it's like, think about if you're going to go to a softball, you know, practice place or fastball, right? You're going to walk into the sixty mile an hour cage and just walk around, see if you can get hit by a ball at some point? Wouldn't do that. It's not safe. The place now is perfect, absolutely perfect. You guys saved our butts seventeen years ago, right? Appreciate that very much. But, you know, I, I was disappointed about the outcome of the dog park, to be honest, because I thought, we all said we didn't really want that, and that kind of happened, and now there's dog stuff all over the place. I wouldn't even go there. But anyway, so I'm giving you a second chance here, and I hope that we do the right thing because, oh, you know, my house, like, they're throwing right at my house, and I'm afraid that things are going to come at my house. And when the golf course was there, my wife almost got hit twice. Ten feet, missed her head. At the time, it was like twenty feet. One time, I was standing in the front of my house, and a ball bounced right in front of my foot, in the front yard. So I'm not buying the safety thing. I mean, I know how to play golf, and I can hit a ball almost two hundred and fifty yards. So the safety, let's think about the safety. It's, you can't compare it to a golf course because it's not. It's a serene, perfect piece of land that people just love the way it is. So I would pray to God that you guys really listen to us and consider that, please. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes.
Hi, Diane Napert-Huall, 438 Savage Hill Road. Definitely out of my comfort zone up here. I thought I should speak up, and thank you for the opportunity to do so. So again, we live right on the fairway. I was kind of surprised when I looked at it. It was a lot bigger than I expected. I won't say there hasn't been any impact with the dog park. There's definitely more traffic. People are speeding on our street, pretty much every car, maybe eighty percent. There's more noise. There's more litter. People don't use the receptacles. Dogs are off-leash almost daily, so I would like it if people patrolled it a little bit more.
So would I. I would like it too. Trying to make that happen, yeah, because I see, I see what you're talking about.
Yeah, I saw one man, two dogs were running. Didn't have you on the leash. He was running after one. Anyway.
We'll work on that.
But overall, the people are quite nice. We walk our neighbor's dog every day. We lost our cat once. They're all so nice. They helped us, et cetera. So it's working quite well. But what I've been doing over the last two years is monitoring the birds. So one gentleman mentioned the bird. So we have a real, like a bird sanctuary there. I've identified like over eighty species of birds. Several are endangered and threatened species, special concern birds. So I think it's something maybe Berlin should, you know, brag about. It's something we could probably brag about with this space. But I, I, you know, I didn't even know, but I looked a little bit about the, like, eighty percent that play are men, and it's between ages of twenty-five and fifty. Like, I looked up some statistics. But I think, as other people mentioned, it's probably not the right space for it. I have nothing against it. I might try it myself, but I just don't think that's a good spot for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, anyone else in the audience here? Seeing no hands, any, oh, yeah, let's, hang on, let this lady, and then we'll, George. Yeah, and then we'll look online if there's any hands up. I don't see any.
Hi, Jeanette Murphy, 448 Savage Hill. Actually, I'm neighbors with them, and I have to agree with a lot of what everybody's saying. I mean, if anybody threw a disc from the edge of those trees, it would end up in my yard. I've had two golf balls hit my house. I could show you the marks. They're still there. But I think that a disc would be a lot more, even more dangerous, because it would come in at a lower level than a golf ball. And I just think that in my backyard, where that space is, is not a place for one of those baskets to be. I really think that it's dangerous. That's all.
Thank you. Yeah, one, one word, no. Oh, okay, yes, gentleman. I'm sorry, yeah.
Good afternoon.
All right.
Alan, 23 Crater Lane. Trying to think where to begin. I first came here, actually, when the first presentation happened, a year, a year and a half ago. When Rob Lemire, the designer of the course, was here. To address some of the concerns that were noted tonight, so I'm a town resident. I've been in the town, I don't know, eight or so years. I've been playing disc golf fifteen years. I'm not that good as Toby, but I'm, well, let's just say, like an average, you know, amateur. I cannot throw ninety miles an hour. Whoever said that, I can probably throw close to maybe fifty at the best case scenario. I have five of that disc in my bag. It's called the Strike. As far as safety concerns go, I just want to note that the current proposal that is basically provided to the town is a, let's say, the interim step of putting a course into Pistol Creek, has been modified by Rob to mitigate basically all safety concerns. Every single, the most important part of what goes into the analysis of a disc golf course, which is why it shouldn't be put into a chat GPT or AI-type technology, is the trajectory of the disc. So the flow, you have a start, you have a finish. You're never going to throw backwards. And so to mitigate the concerns of safety is to direct that disc in the direction of the tee pad, or from the tee pad to the basket. You'll notice in the course design that the flow, basically in every case, is throwing away from the cart path and never crossing one. That's the key that's been modified versus the original proposal. So I just wanted to kind of draw that in. Specifically also, the idea of putting a nine-hole course into this property, I would say is actually inherently more, less safe, largely because if you try to create a nine-hole course, you're extending the duration of every hole. By doing that, you're taking a hole that would be two hundred feet. Most of these, this is not a long course. It's a proposal of a fun course that would be really, you know, intermediate to intro kind of friendly, so it can be adaptive to the younger players in the sport, so that elderly people can also play it, so that it's also recognizing that the park itself is a wonderful asset that's relatively flat terrain. You can use the cart paths. It's adaptive. I walk it all the time with my, my two daughters and recently my dog. And I will just say that, like, we all agree, the park is beautiful. It's a wonderful town asset to have. This proposal is to utilize the underutilized parts of the park. It's not to interfere with the walkers that are going to be using the park. You can safely walk around the park on the cart paths. When I'm in the park, I don't notice people on the grass. This is to use the grassy areas. The only parts that are even close to houses, you're throwing away from, which is on, I think, holes one through four, and then you're going to enter the areas of the park at the grass, but no one is there. It, I fully recognize that there's concerns and there's safety concerns that need to be addressed. But I want to note that the proposal is to mitigate those as much as possible. We're not the only municipality trying to put a park in. There's lots of parks across the state of Connecticut. It's a great asset to utilize, something that's owned by the town, but in my opinion, it's being underutilized. The capital outlay is effectively nothing, relatively on a couple thousands of dollars of a, you know, for that first step toe-in-the-water kind of approach. There is no added cost of maintenance at all over what's already being done today. Maybe there's some shrubbery clearing, volunteering between Toby and I. We'll probably do that ourselves. It creates a community, creates potential program for children in the town, creates another added resource. I appreciate all the concerns of anyone that lives near it. Maybe they're not familiar with it. The reality is, is that we have this beautiful asset that's the park. We should do something. The idea to think that we should just not do anything with it, because maybe it'll be louder, maybe it'll have some graphic. That means people are using this full-owned properties. That's not a problem. So I just wanted to kind of drive this home a little bit, recognize that the idea of people using parks should not be frowned upon in this town. In addition to that, it is a, as it was spoken to earlier today, it is an extremely low-cost-to-entry sport. And in times right now, when we all have, you know, we know our wallets are tighter than they ever used to be, it's, it's something that, you know, if you wanted to go play, you could basically buy a couple discs, continue to play for the cost of going to play one round of golf at any course. And you'll compete as long as you have those discs, free public access sport. On that.
Thank you, sir. Let George, and then you're next. Is that okay? Tell George to sit down, Joan. It's okay. Just tell him to sit down.
Just wanted, unfortunately, Peter left, but I said this to him before, before he left. There's a, when he compared it to Timberland, okay, the tenth hole and eleventh hole, I play there all the time. Fundamental difference, the tenth hole at Timberland is four hundred feet wide, at least, at least, okay? Your team largely off on the right side with a huge buffer of rough on the left-hand side before you even get to the hole, okay? We're talking about a hundred feet. And I know, I know a disc doesn't go anywhere near as, or as golf ball. And I can hit it across the road. I've done that too, which isn't a good thing, but.
You're the one who puts them in my front yard.
No, I've never been left. No, the third hole. Oh, no. That's a foul right across the.
Better say no, no.
It's a free golf ball.
I probably haven't done that.
But I've never had a window shat, anyone's curious.
That's a good thing.
The other, the other thing he said was, I don't understand the comparisons to crash dummy tests and things like that. I'm not really advocating that somebody's going to get struck in the head and killed. I'm advocating that if there is an error, like, if it's a toddler or a senior person or whatever, even if it clips you in the arm at fifty miles an hour, you picked up the orange one. I don't think they're as safe as, well, make them out to be. To the, to the last comment, I'll just leave it at, look at the map and you tell me if you think there are no fairway, no holes parallel to the cart paths. What he said is largely true, but there's still three or four holes where they're parallel to the cart paths.
Let's go.
Hi, Joan Veely, 1424 Orchard Road. I do agree with what Mr. Miller and others have said, so I won't duplicate those. But I would like to ask, what are the properties in town have been considered for this course? We do have other parks. It doesn't have to be Pistol Creek, and I encourage you to save Pistol Creek just the way it is. You may want to look at Bicentennial. You're talking about perhaps widening the fairways and removing shrub and brushing whatever. Why not Bicentennial? Yeah, I think there's a sheer property. Isn't there something off the Chamberlain Highway? There's a big walking trail. It hooks up back to the Orchard Road property. So you may want to look at that. I think Mr. Miller makes a good point with reducing it down to something more feasible like the nine holes as opposed to the eighteen. And then my other concern, of course, is parking. If you do go ahead with Pistol Creek, and if the numbers do, and are projected to increase with car traffic, where exactly are they supposed to park? On Savage Hill, on Spruce Brook? And so that is a concern as well. So with that, I'd say thank you for listening to my comments.
Thank you. Anyone else? One final, one follow-up? Sure, sure. Yes.
Lewis Hu.
Yes, yeah.
So I just, I think one more thing to consider is, you know, talking about community and having this thing be a good thing for folks. Well, what if some of the community stops coming to the park? Because they don't want to deal with that. They don't want to worry about getting hit in the head with a, you know, a frisbee or something. Because I'm sure there's some older folks that aren't going to really want to do that, if they're concerned about that. So I think that's something that we might want to consider as well. Maybe they don't start, they stop coming. Maybe the dogs are going to start chasing these things too. I don't know. Thank you.
Thank you. Any? Anyone else? Anybody online? Any, just, there's nobody online, right? And Woody, Woody will be the. Yes, Woody.
We answer some of the questions that were brought up tonight, but we have a member of the EFA that's here. If he would like to come up and speak towards the distance and parameters of the fairways that George has spoken about tonight.
Sure. It's got all the information out there. There's a lot of information. It's got all the information out there, there's a lot of information, so. You haven't made our job very easy, folks, I'll tell you that.
Good evening, my name is Craig Smolin, that's C-R-A-I-G-S-M-O-L-I-N. I live at six-three-one Pope's Island Road in Milford, Connecticut. Recognize that I am not a town resident. I'm here as the Connecticut representative for the New England Flying Disc Association. I've been a member of the Professional Disc Golf Association for twenty years. And I am, pardon me, it's been a while since I've done a public hearing. I have run over fifty Professional Disc Golf Association tournaments in the last ten years, of which twenty are charitable events. I have designed Bitner Park in Guilford, Connecticut, where a great many of the same concerns that you all have presented were raised with our initial proposal for a course at Peddler's Park. And then we shifted gears and designed a course at Bitner Park. I'm here at the behest of Steve and Rob Lemire, who I've known for over five years. Rob is a very professional individual, he recognizes all of your concerns. And I would dare say he would mitigate to the maximum extent possible, whatever he can. I've looked at the course map, I, I've not had a chance to walk this property. But it is my understanding that all of the tee pads are aimed away from trails or away from people's homes, and that the baskets are also similarly located. My role as the Connecticut representative for NIFA, I wanted to very quickly state what our mission is. And I'm going to read from our website. The New England Flying Disc Association is a five-oh-one-C-three nonprofit organization dedicated to the growth and development of the sport of disc golf in New England, of parts of New York and New Jersey. At NIFA, we're raising funds and promoting initiatives, serve the disc golf community of the Northeast while giving back to our members. We believe in spreading awareness of courses, leagues, events, and all things disc golf. By raising funds through memberships, we are able to assist with building courses, supporting the growth of youth programs, and giving back to the membership through a season-long NIFA point series. So. As I said at the outset, I've been playing this sport for twenty years, and I've never met a better group of people. I've kind of a social misfit at that time, when I was twenty-seven, and these people welcomed me in and fostered a sense of community and volunteerism. And I've strived ever since to give that back throughout the entire, entire state of Connecticut, so. Whatever questions I can answer for you in terms of course design and safety, I'm happy to do so. Rob, before I give you that opportunity, Rob specifically asked me to mention Cranberry Park in Norwalk, Connecticut, which was the first ever permanent disc golf course in Connecticut. It is a multi-use park with extensive trails. And unlike many towns in Connecticut, it has a no-leash law. So there are pedestrians on the trails with their dogs under voice command only. And we have redesigned that course at least three times over the last twenty-five years in order to mitigate safety concerns of trail users, dogs, and other park users. In all of my time playing there, volunteering there, running tournaments there throughout the fall and winter, we have never once had any significant injuries, we have never had one significant incident between a player and a dog or a dog owner. And it is a testament to the community of pedestrians have the right of way. That's it in a nutshell. I am a little nervous, it's, like I said, it's been a long time, so.
No problem, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Mr. Woody? How we doing?
Great, any direct questions that I can try to answer?
I don't know, what do you have, anything, folks? I mean, I, I, we, yeah, sure, sure. Through, through, you gotta come on the mic, though, it's got to be through, yeah, we can't, otherwise we wouldn't.
Earl.
Yeah, come on. Woody, Woody's good, he won't, he won't. He won't hurt you. Maybe a little bit, but not too much.
Scott Bates at Tribe Berlin, the only question on the park that you were just mentioning, and you know incidences and multi-use, does it have the same characteristics as ours, where it's basically a golf course where the cart path follows every piece of play? Or does yours carve through the woods? And it's, what I'm saying is, I haven't seen yours and I barely looked at this, I've walked it a million times. A golf course is built with the cart path to be as parallel as possible to the line of play. That's how people build golf courses. You're talking about no incidences at yours, I've never seen it, and I'm just asking you if, I mean, does the cart path carve completely? Does your path carve right alongside of what you're talking about? Sorry, I'm not calling you. Do you want me to state my name?
Yes, please, yes.
Six-three-one Pope's Island Road in Milford, Connecticut. In short, no. Cranberry Park is a heavily wooded course, was, it has been that way for the entirety of the time. And the course was initially installed on the existing trails there, which were fairly wide and well-travel. And as this technology has changed, as George brought up, twenty-five, thirty years ago, discs were much smaller, slower, they didn't travel as far, players didn't know how to throw them as far.
Can you step closer to the microphone so we can hear you, please?
Yes. So this technology changed. We became much more aware of player safety, of park user safety, and we've removed those holes that are on the trail system off of the trails. So, yes, I grant you, these are two completely different pieces of property. I haven't seen Pistol Creek, I don't know what the distances are, I don't know how properties of budding them look like. But there are ways to lay your safety concerns and ensure that no one is throwing towards someone's home. I wouldn't want that, I know you guys don't want that. So there is a way to this in a way that, that makes sense. And I will be honest, and upfront with you guys, I ran into this issue in Guilford. We originally had a course proposal for Peddler's Park. We're trying to do eighteen holes in a smaller piece of property. Several neighbors voiced their concerns, we heard them out. We shifted to a much larger park called Bitner Park, also with an existing trail system, mountain bikers, horseback riders, and we used the un, we used the spaces between those trails to create a course in the woods there. So there are ways around, I'm not saying Pistol Creek isn't the right piece, it's a property for a course. It might, might be right, it might be wrong, but there are ways to handle this in a way that makes sense. Address town residents' concerns. But again, I think it's an amazing sport, I have dedicated nearly half my life to it. And I love it with a passion that I can't even begin to express.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Woody? Do you want, a little more comment? Hang on, Woody, don't go anywhere.
My name is Angelou Millard, I live at twelve-thirty-one Orchard Road. He left.
Oh, oh, no.
Left. When he speaks.
He's back, here he is, here he is. He's back.
He talks about courtesy and accidents and things like that during a tournament. I'm talking when it's not a tournament, we have children that are going to start playing that don't have the knowledge or the expertise that you have, that may fling the disc at a house or toward a path. At that point, who is liable if somebody gets hurt? That's my question.
The town.
Town.
Just like any, any, any.
That liability.
Taxpayers. Liability insurance for the town.
Like to do that.
Yeah. Nobody does, but we have liability insurance everywhere.
He talks about a tournament, he's not talking about day-to-day children from this town or kids that come from out of town just playing on a new disc golf course. They may not even know how to play it properly. That's my concern too. I don't like the idea of hearing that you're going to, maybe not clear-cut. I don't think it's just going to be trimming, I think you're going to be clearing some areas if this does go through. You'll take away from the beauty of the park the way it exists now. Birds, where they nest and raise, you walk through it, you can hear it in the springtime. I can, I just see some tiriation coming if this should go through the way they plan it. Thank you.
Thanks. Mr. Woody? Yes, that's good. What, what, with what you heard, anything you just wanted to bring up before we close this?
Concern is kind of what George brought up, if there is a limitation of forty feet of buffer, we think we need to re-measure these holes before going back to conservation and the Park and Rec Commission before making any decisions.
Yeah, I would agree, I mean, certainly agree that that's specifics, and there's probably a whole lot of other things as we look at what was said tonight and, and what we've done to, to go ahead, yeah.
I have a question, and I don't know if you've looked at it, because I think originally, from what some of the speakers were saying tonight, is that they've looked at, you know, Pistol Creek, the golf course, because of how it's leveled and maybe you get others to be able to play that maybe have disabilities. Do we have other areas within the town that maybe something like this could work? Have we, you know, is that something we can look at? You know, it, are there other spots?
We could definitely vet other areas throughout town. Originally, when the YMCA started to use Pistol Creek for the first day camp that I think they had ten or fifteen years ago, there was a small discourse on the opposite side of the arc. I know Middletown had approached us to build a disc golf course on their side of it. And they wanted to build it with tee boxes and make it more challenging and with the lay of the land of up and downs. And the only problem is there's no place to park on the Middletown side. So we kind of standoffishly said no, because we don't want you having a disc golf course, hosting tournaments, having these events, and everybody parking on Berlin. We could definitely see, check out Bicentennial, which I believe is passive recreation only, so I don't think that would apply. But maybe Shears or Chakowsky's Sage Park or something, but we could try to vet other areas. But I think we're going to have the same concerns no matter where we have. So, but we can definitely ask around and see where else I might work, work with Rob and Craig to see if they can think of another idea. Which side?
Well, it's on the Middletown side, let Middletown build it, they're going to build it. They got more money than we do. Yeah, no, I, I, I think, hearing everything, you know, we, we've said, any other council members, by the way, we're, I don't know. Yeah, we'll, we'll go back and look at a lot of things. So it was great for the input, and we'll go back and figure, figure out, figure some things out.
You very much.
All right, thank you, Woody, thank you. Thank you, folks, with that, I will go ahead and close this public hearing. We're taking no action tonight at all, so we'll go back and do some more thinking and looking and figure out where we're going to go. Thank, thank you all, thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Appreciate it. Yeah, no, it's all good, it's all good on both sides. Yes, it's closed, I hereby have closed it, yes, well, we'll, we'll gavel it closed, all right, it's closed, just to make sure.
Yes, official.
Good, we're good.
Good.
Yes, sir, new business, oof, it's a long way to new business.
Start with something a little less controversial, like the budget?
Yeah, oh, yeah, that's no problem, no, no problem with that.
Way to go, Ryan.
We'll let the room clear out for a moment here.
Or anybody who hears it sound, it's just so loud.
Yeah, sure.
I, yeah, I had a coke label on.
We, uh, but, let Kate take care of it, better she take care of it than me, she'll, she'll whip them in and go, get out of here.
Don't mess with Kate.
No, no, don't mess with Kate, we know that, poof, we know that. That's it, that's it, don't mess with Kate, no, we don't want to do that. Okay, we're good, budget, budget, budget. Budget, budget, budget. So, yes, here we are.
Unfortunately, we had a second referendum.
Yes.
As John had pointed out earlier, failed last week, and so the Board of Finance moved forward and sent the budget unmodified back to the council.
They were tied three to three, right, I believe? They were.
Well, there was a motion made initially at the Board of Finance meeting to add back that fifty thousand dollars, that tied three-three.
Right.
And there was a motion made to.
Send it as it is.
As is, which did pass.
So they made no changes.
They made no change.
Yeah, from the first budget. I mean, the fifty grand remains out and the town budget remained the same.
Right, yes, and you'll see the results of that referendum.
Yes, yes. So that's interesting. You know, we, as we mentioned, we know we're going to go back and fix this in the charter, so there's hopefully a lot less confusion going forward. Just to open it up, I mean, if I'm looking at the town budget, I mean, it, it's certainly, there's a large difference in the too-high, too-low. Too-high, two forty-seven, too-low, right, ninety. It didn't pass, obviously, I don't know how we wouldn't do something with the town budget, definitely. I, I would think we'd have to lower it based upon those results, pretty clear. And Board of Ed is, you know, obviously, very slim amount. I mean, obviously, it did not pass either. And the too-high, too-low is, you know, what, seven votes? So I don't know, folks, what do we, what do we think, and want to do the, the town first? That's its first, and what do we think about the town? Unfortunately, it passed the first time, but, yes.
It's just that, with the low turnout and, and I know we all have to make assumptions, and mine is.
Can't make assumptions, yeah.
We're goring your rocks and you're not complaining. So I can't see why we wouldn't just keep it the same, let it go.
Yeah.
I agree with Peter.
Okay, what do we think of us?
I'm okay with that.
What do we think, Sandy? Seems like we're ignoring the vote.
Well, I, I think that's.
Especially on the town side.
I think that's where I struggle a little bit, I know the first time the town vote, the town budget passed. The Board of Ed didn't, and although it was a, a small turnout, we felt it was worth listening to the voters, and we made a small token adjustment to the Board of Ed budget.
Disagree with that character of the trend, I think the token, fifty thousand dollars is a lot of money, but.
Well, I'm looking at compared to the budget, so that, that's why, you know, I looked at it that way. So I struggle with, why would we not do the same thing with, with the town budget? I'm not saying the same amount of money, I, that's just kind of where I struggle. And granted, yes, less people came out this time than the last, so. It's just tough.
I, I don't, I don't really understand the who came out, I mean, I guess that part, there's no struggle with me. There's a struggle with the way the questions are structured, no question, confusing. But I, I don't care if five hundred people came out or two hundred came out, honestly, they took the time to come and vote. And I don't care what election it is, whether it's for town council or anybody. People came out and voted, and there's numbers here to, you know, some of it, we have to decipher a little bit. I don't think the town one on this time is much to decipher, it's pretty overwhelming that it's too high. It didn't pass, and it's too high. I don't think there's any way to look at that a different way, and I don't know why we'd ignore the voters. Because that, to me, that's what it would mean. Just a few people, who cares? I mean, honestly, that's, that's, that's completely not what democracy is about, I thought. I learned that in political science at UConn, but maybe I didn't learn it right. But, so that's pretty clear, the Board of Ed's a little bit different, that those numbers are a little bit different. And, and we did the first time reduce their budget, but I, I don't know. I, I mean, how, how do we ignore the percentage of voters that come out? That's in any election, let's say it's low for the town, you know, for the municipal election this fall. What do we just say, oh, well, I don't know if the people came out, so.
I mean.
It's advisory, correct.
Let me get it out before you cut me off. What I was saying is, the charter gives us options as to what to do if the budget doesn't pass.
It does.
It doesn't say if the vote, if no carries the day, they were required to reduce it, that is not what our charter says.
That is true.
So, that's how I feel about it.
No, that's true, it's advisory, and if the voters advise us, I guess we should take their advice. But that's just, again, my crazy thoughts on democracy, but go ahead.
I mean, go ahead, Charlie, I'm sorry.
You know, I was the one that said, the voter said lower the school budget, so I proposed that. And I suppose the same logic I should apply to the town budget, the town budget's a much smaller account comparatively, so the, the no votes were similar. Maybe we should propose like a twenty-five thousand dollar cut to the town instead of, you know, trying to keep it listening to the voters. Your points, well taken.
Sandy?
Yeah, I was going to say, the only other way I can look at it is that on the first referendum, town budget passed. town budget passed. And listening to George's comments this evening, where the intent of the Charter Commission was to have it, if it passed, then it wouldn't, you know, go to be voted on again. I mean, so that's kind of a struggle as well, because gee, it passed the first time, you know.
You look at it as a wash, I suppose.
Yeah.
But.
Maybe we should have a third referendum, see what happens.
No, no, no.
Somebody suggested we just keep, just keep having them until we pass them, right? Some towns do that, and you're right, they don't get their budget passed till October, right? No, we don't, we do not want to do that. I'm sorry, we went to a second referendum, quite frankly, but that's what the Charter Commission thought, which is always the problem when you open back up the Charter, folks. We don't know what goes wrong with that Charter Commission because they can do what they want to do. And I don't know why we went to two, but whatever, we did, and here we are. So, yes. Oh, my goodness, please, no. Yes. Yes, Mark, what do we got, Mark?
Well, I, you know, going by the first, you know, first referendum, I agree with what Sandy said, the budget passed. And then, you know, we just arbitrarily took a fifty thousand dollar, you know, the motion was made by Charlie to take fifty thousand dollars out of the budget. I don't know where this number came from, you know, but I mean, we pulled that number out of thin air. But, you know, yeah, you do have to listen to the voters, but I think, looking at everything, and a good job that the Board of Finance did, is that, you know, we do have to look at what's best for the town, what's best for the school board, and, you know, what's best for the students when we, when we look at everything. So, I mean, you know, I'm not in favor of the fifty thousand dollars being pulled from the Board of Ed budget, and I think we should stick at, since the town budget passed, at a total, you know, of the four percent which was first proposed, we should stick with that. That's how I feel.
No, we can't do that. We'd have to go to a, yes, yes. We can't add it back, Mark, otherwise. That would be another thing. All right, so what are we thinking here? The town, where the town? So we're mixing a match in here, but what are the town? The town votes, to me, very clear. The Board of Ed, not so much, but I like Charlie's suggestion myself. The twenty-five thousand, it's a smaller budget. The vote's pretty clear on the second vote. I understand their advisory, but that's how it was written, but I, you know, I don't know. But we listened to the voters. I thought that's what we, that's what we should do as far as I'm concerned, but. Want to take a motion and see what happens?
I move we leave the school budget as it is and lower the town budget by twenty-five thousand dollars.
Take a second.
Second.
Second, all right.
Mayor?
Yes.
Mayor, I apologize. This is Kevin. I'm wondering if the town attorney can weigh in. The Charter indicates you can reduce by line item. The Board of Education is a single line, so I, I don't think you can just reduce the budget by a number. I believe you have to identify the line item or items.
For the twenty-five?
Yeah, we can't just reduce arbitrarily.
For the fifty, too?
Right.
Twenty-five, yeah.
Board of Ed can do the fifty.
The fifty, right.
Twenty-five, Kevin's absolutely right. The twenty-five, we would have to come up with something within the general.
Yep. Well, let's come up with something. Can we do it quickly?
Kevin and I had an idea.
Sure, let's hear it. So, yeah.
Kevin, but it was only, would you guys settle for twenty, maybe?
Maybe. What, what are you talking about?
We have.
There's oxes, you're goring.
Yeah, I don't want to give any oxes up, but there's a, there's partitions that need to be added to our animal control building that are required by state statutes, and we do have a couple of years to do that, so we could delay that this fiscal year, but we would need to add them at a later date. I believe, what is that, Kevin, twenty thousand?
It's, it's a contractual services line in the animal control budget for twenty thousand, four hundred, sixty dollars.
Is it a safety issue or no?
It's, instead of, we have plywood barriers in between, and the state is now mandating, like, cinder blocks in between, just to make sure that no fluids go between the crates. I mean, they're, they're safe now. It's not a, it can, it can wait. If we gotta wait on something, this can, this can wait. We are mandated to do it, so we don't want to delay it too long, but it can, it can go a little longer. That would be my suggestion. That works. That must have been proposed by the Masons Union.
Could very well. So would we modify the motion to, what, what?
Would we eliminate the petition item in the budget?
What was the amount?
Twenty thousand, four hundred, Kevin, for?
Twenty thousand, four hundred, sixty contractual services and animal control.
Okay.
Second.
Second, okay. So motion on the floor. We'll take a vote. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Three, three ayes, and is that it?
Nay.
Nay.
Opposed.
Opposed. Oh, very interesting. Hmm. I could call up another voter. She said she's available. Should I do that?
You have the power, isn't that right? I don't know if I want to bother her at this time, but that's.
Well, she told me she, we could do that.
All right.
She did tell me. I did talk to her. Rather than a tie.
And there again, we're not getting rid of petitions. We're delaying it till next year.
Right. It'll be done.
We only paid a million dollars for that three-car garage.
That was, that was very expensive.
Is that for the avian flu? Is that why those petitions are?
Get down in here. Hold on, hold on.
Okay.
Otherwise, if we're, oops.
Unfunded mandates.
Of course.
There's a lot of those around.
Hey, I passed a couple months.
There we go. What is that noise? Is it the faucet? Texting. Oh, who, who's out there texting? Is it out there? Oh, on Zoom, somebody's.
Got to go beat me with the cell, huh?
Waiting for an answer, sorry, folks. She probably gave up by now, whatever. I haven't heard an answer, so we give up one more. Yes, she's going to be here in a minute. All right. She'll be on in a couple minutes. Chat amongst ourselves, whatever we want to do.
Can we table it for a minute and do?
Yes, yeah, let's table it. Yeah, and then when she comes on, we'll do it. So we'll table that. We know where we're at, so. Yes, let's move on.
You're not supposed to laugh at the council. Sure that's in your contract somewhere.
Yeah, why not? What the heck?
I know we're entertaining, but.
Yes. What's up? Number two? It's good, we only have six of them tonight.
Number two is the registrars have a request, and they're here for their request. I will turn it to them.
No, they don't, no, they don't wish to speak.
And then, then there is no request. I have no request.
So could we, well, no, 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 we'll, so could we?
I didn't sign this agenda item, so I would turn it to them if they would like to discuss it.
Yeah, see some comments on one of these pages.
It's funny, we promised them.
Just so we understand that, but, but I, I thought we, okay, I thought we gave them all. I thought we settled this. That's it. Okay, that's the only question I have.
Hello.
Yes, hello. Yes, ladies, please, yeah.
Straightforward, that's the convening hours that we submitted after the November election, based on our last House meeting, that was the stipend and hour pay. So, based on last year, without knowing what was going to, how many, thirty days of voting that we were going to end up doing in our town. So, we ended up working the hours and submitted it as requested because they didn't want to commit to the salary changes at the beginning of the year, so it was a wait and see.
And when we originally submitted the, I'm sorry, when we originally submitted the hours, we were told that we, because it was commingled with the payroll for the early voting pay grid and for the actual election day pay grid, we were advised to remove our names off of it. We were told that we would not be able to pay the election workers with our names tagged on. That would have to be handled as a separate account. So we removed the names so that the election workers and the early voting workers would be paid. We held on to that. We resubmitted it as we were told that if we were handling ballots or doing the jobs outside of the registrar's duties, that we would be able to charge the town for, as being election workers. And other registrars were doing this as well in different towns, so. Yeah, and then the grant money was commingled. But anyway, what happened was that we were informed that we had to delay the payment because we had a referendum, and we had possibility of a second referendum, so there may not be money in the funds, which was the non-taxable election worker fund, to pay us. So we sat through December, and we sat through the first referendum, and they were told to wait for, after the second referendum. So now, second render referendum has passed. We still have some money in the budget, so now we're just submitting hours. Work that we did as election workers, which was all the days of early voting and same-day registration and on election day as well, which were outside the scope of the registrar's duties. Does that make any sense?
Some of it does, but what, who, who told you to wait? Okay. And the other question I have is, registrars working out, I don't, I don't quite understand outside the registrar duties, what? Yeah, what?
There was a lot of changes here, one paying our election workers and also the level.
We could submit. I know we cannot sign off on each other's hours, and that's why we put it forward. And as we addressed our concern last year, the stipend was going to be covering the ask of what was being asked of the registers last year with the thirty days of voting.
But.
Posted.
Go ahead. I'm sorry.
Be voting. We were, we had to have certain personnel that were assigned to work on the computer, all right? They had to be trained with the computer, which is fine. We accepted that responsibility, and we lined up our deputies to do that, along with some other people who were pretty good at always being at the call and the ready, for not only the idea, early voting, but working on the election day as well. Now, when you have to train these people on the computer, you have to be very specific and very careful who you choose, because once you open up that computer and you give them that password, they're able to, to go a little bit deeper than the state would like you to. So you have to have some trustworthy people. Let's just put it that way.
Sure.
On the keyboard. And because we were limited as to how many people we could hire, because we were limited by the space, we had to pinch it on, in the eleventh hour, we had to come in and serve as election workers, because we had to utilize our computers, utilize our knowledge, and help out the team that was struggling, trying to manage all the people that were coming in, not only for same-day registration, but for early voting. And then, of course, because same-day registration carried over to the actual election day, we were swamped with that. We had two of our assistants in the office trying to maintain that level, but the numbers on that had accelerated. Plus, you had the added difficulty of trying to prove that these people hadn't voted somewhere else in the state before you let them cast, cast a ballot. It's all, it's all a real mess.
Yeah, so as registered.
Does seem to be.
For eighteen days in a row, not a day off, four hours, we're doing seventy hours a week, and then, and we're less than part-time in the town. So, we addressed that concern a year ahead of time, which it was tabled based on the wait and see, and that's the point we're at, is to settle it out. And this is the remain in balance, so it was just basically, we can get paid for the remaining balance.
I, I thought, though, that's what we settled in March or April, yes. But, but that was, I didn't hear about other payments. I don't think we heard. From who?
It was from Aroche.
Okay.
That stated stipend plus keep track of your hours and do all that. So that's what we submitted, the election hours, keep track of our hours, your work. This is the balance, and that's why we thought it was straightforward asked. Stipend wasn't enough.
Yeah.
Finance Department aware of it?
Yeah, I don't know. Kevin, what, what do you have to, anything to add to this discussion?
The only involvement Finance has really had is any time that hours have been initially submitted, along with the other folks who have worked the polls in this instance, I have referred both Joan and Christie that no one is allowed to submit or approve their own hours. So, any of their hours need to be approved by the town manager, and that, that applies to any employee. No one's allowed to submit for their own reimbursement, or the, the next level up always has to approve. They have brought this forward. The situation you have tonight, you've obviously had this discussion in the past. It has not been approved by now two town managers and an interim town manager. So, we have stated in Finance, you know, if the town manager approves it, or in this instance, if the council approves it, then naturally we would pay, and you've done some planned stipends. There was the ten thousand dollar planned stipend in the budget this year, which has been fully paid out. There were also two subsequent stipends that you paid out during calendar year 2024. Those were all approved by the council and the Board of Finance. So, you know, we, if, if, again, we've always said, and this applies again to every employee, that anybody who submits their time, it needs to be approved by someone above, so.
Yeah, we've been working with three different town managers.
Yes.
So it goes back to the original.
But nobody, what did he just say, though? Nobody, right.
Yeah, the two town managers and the interim town manager. So you had Aroche, Lee, and Ryan.
The payroll wasn't even paid out at that point with the other town manager, too. We were still waiting for our poll works to be paid, so it wasn't even in front of him while he was here either.
Yeah, I guess.
We have something in writing from Aroche that says we were going to pay the stipend and then for them to submit the hours.
Having the conversation at the town council meeting, right, when they came back the last time about the stipend, I think they were instructed to keep track of their hours and that they could address it with us at a later time if it was necessary, so.
Yeah. I don't know. I mean, my understanding when Aroche started, when we started this way back in the beginning, was we were going to kind of track hours to see where their pay would turn out in the end. It wasn't that we were going to pay them for every hour. I never had, I never had that, and I could be mistaken. I never had that.
Saying that, I remember the conversation about tracking the hours and come back. I'm not saying there was a decision made at that time, and they, yes, you'll get paid or no, you won't.
Right.
I think that's what discussing that.
Mayor, if I may, if I may weigh in.
Yeah.
I would say, you know, Aroche isn't here, so I'll try to speak for some of the conversations. Aroche did ask for a full record-keeping of the hours, so.
Yeah.
There, there are weeks where there are considerable hours, and then there are other weeks where there are little or no hours. The nature of the job, there's nothing, it was all completely appropriate. And so, hi, his request in looking at the hours was to understand all of. was to understand all of the hours, to determine over the course of the year, what were the hours relative to what was expected to be paid. Historically, going back many years, the average was intended to be twenty hours a week for the position, recognizing that during election weeks, especially last year, a presidential year, those numbers will be much higher, and then in other weeks, they would presumably be lower. The Board of Finance did have this discussion, I believe Mayor, you and Councilor Veach were actually at that meeting, and one of the Board of Finance members said, keep track of all of your hours across the year, and then let's revisit it. So, that, that was what Aroche had asked for, and he was not willing to approve until he had seen the, the comprehensive picture of the hours.
Which we did meet with Lee, and we gave him the twenty-nine point five hours to show them that we stayed under thirty, so you do not need full-time registers, we did have a meeting with him on this, and we kept track of the hours, we submitted it to Lee, showing for our own peace of mind to see, because we knew a year ahead of time, that we were going to be putting a lot of hours in, and we were asking for full, full-time pay back then, and they didn't think we were going to meet it, and that's why they asked us to keep track of our hours, and that's why we didn't get our raise last year in the beginning of the year, because they didn't know if we were going to have the early voting or, or even a primary, so we had every election with early voting attached, the presidential also being separated for that primary as a new election, so it was the thirty days, so our town did have all, you know, election days in play. And that would have been less hours if we didn't have all that, but this year, that's going to bring up another, fourteen days again.
Can I ask a clarifying question? Because I had written down, and I want to make sure that this is correct, that the hours that you submitted, you submitted for working as a election worker.
So, the.
So, basically, if you hadn't done that, you would have had to bring in another, another election worker.
Because what happens is the state had asked us to keep separate hours for anything early voting worked, because there was grant money available for early voting hours only, so we had to keep track of that separately, and that's what's on the pay grid that you're seeing, because we could have qualified for grant money for that, top of the stipend pay. But again, that's why we thought it was a pretty straightforward ask, this was the remaining balance.
So, so, I, I don't, I don't know what to say about this one, but, but going forward, though, your, your salary is your salary, right, as, as agreed to, right? But we're not, there's not.
Voting laws changing.
Yeah.
That, registers can submit as election workers, so we still need to talk with the town and understand, and I think Ryan's like, I think we're open to that, or seeing what was going to happen with early voting, because it was in legislation, and if they get rid of it, if they, you know, had lesser days of it, we didn't know what was going to come out of this session. As of right now, I think everything is still going forward as it is.
But meaning, meaning no, the same, so nothing would change for the next year.
Over the tabulators, I, I don't even know where we're at with, with the final decision.
I, I don't know, but, what, what, yes, yes.
Deal with stipends anymore, it's just, it's just too heartbreaking.
Should be salary.
Should be salary.
That's what it's always been.
Something that we can talk.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I think the point of, right, we, we've talked about this, that, you know, the registrar jobs were, you know, there's weeks that you may not be as busy.
Get track of the hours.
Yeah.
Last year.
Yeah. No, that, last year was, it was the first time understood, hence, hence the stipends and, you know, that, that's understood.
The registrar's salary was increased thirteen percent in fiscal '26, so you, you do see a, an increase in the salary, and also, we are coming into a municipal year where typically there's less work involved, yeah.
From your lips to God's ears.
Typical.
I'm, I'm just looking at it whether it's payment to them or payment to someone else, these are still hours that we would have had to pay someone.
Yeah.
It just so happens to be, you know.
Right, I mean, they did the job instead of somebody else, it's not like you get, you know, gee, if it's, if it's a registrar doing it, you're getting more per hour than another election worker, it's the same rate, so, I mean, I think we'd have to pay it either way, so.
Just further, if that was the case, I, we, we did have a five thousand dollar stipend back in March for this very purpose, so now we're essentially coming back again when we did pay a settled stipend.
Stipend back then, I think, state of problems.
That's, that's.
All the work that was being asked, just like our salary increase, you're increasing our hours, it's not really a raise, so we're having seventeen days of an election in this of both during our town versus what we used to have up to five, so our workload has increased for it to come, so it's not like we're getting a raise, we're doing the work.
But, but going forward, the salary covers everything, right? That's, that, oh, Joan, 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 you're killing me, you're killing us here, you're killing us, Joan, that's what.
You don't want to set a precedence with this very specific year and this very specific issue.
I, well, not.
Do it the same way next year.
Apparently not, because they want to talk about it already, so apparently, we, we have set a precedent, I'm worried about another precedent here, you know, another precedent with.
Just wanted to.
Yeah, but I mean, I mean, you know, other than, other than this, you know, again, I know it all changed, early voting, I mean, you can't go back in history with the registrar because it was different, but it's always been, right, whatever your salary is, there are times of the year you will be slower, and like, you know, we've talked before, right, you know, we've all talked about it, saying that, hey, those are the weeks that, I, I don't want to see you around, we don't want to see you around Town Hall, go take, take a break, because you're going to work hard, you know, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Over at least three years in a row, but we shouldn't have to keep track.
Right, well, you don't, you don't have to anymore.
Yeah.
Right.
And we did a lot of work last year.
Yes.
Just, like I said, I thought it was pretty straightforward.
Right. But, keeping track of the hours also was to figure out from the very, very beginning with Aroche, and, and you ladies and myself, and I think Kevin was in there, was just to figure out what a fair salary would be going forward after the presidential election year. So, we're after the presidential election year, right? We, we gave you thirteen percent, thirteen percent raise in, in the next budget year in Ju- in July, and that's kind of it, right? I mean, that's going forward.
Our opening the door of talk.
Joan, you're killing me, you're killing us, what?
I honestly.
No, I get it, I get it. But, 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 but to Kate's point, we, you know, we, we didn't set a precedent, that was only because we had no clue what to expect with the early voting, and, and on top of it was the presidential year. So, it's crazy, we all know it was crazy, it's crazy, but we figured it out, you know, you've got extra pay, you got the stipends, and we raised your pay going forward, so we're just not going to revisit it all again, because that was the test case, when we started with the Roche, that was a test to figure out what would be fair for you guys to, to get paid. That was the very beginning of this, the very first meeting when we met, we said, yeah, let's, let's keep track of the hours, and we'll, we'll kind of make it right for the presidential year, because it's new and everything, so we're beyond all that, other than this discussion here, we're beyond that after this, and it's just the salary, that's it, I mean, that's how it works. Okay, all right, I'll talk about.
I, I hear you, pretty clear for your mark, I hear you loud and clear.
Okay, okay, all right, we'll talk about it, oh God, all right. What's that, what's that? Oh, we haven't got through.
Getting frustrated, because it's now twenty-five, and we haven't even made a decision.
I got to go back to the budget, too, yeah, hold on, so, I, I, I don't, I honestly don't know what to do.
I, I'm okay in this one specific instance with approving payment for the work that they did. It was a lot of work, they worked really hard.
Okay.
I'm, I'm going on the record saying that just because we're doing this, this one time in this very specific instance, that I have no inclination to do it in the future.
Yep, yep.
But I do think it would be important to see people pay for their work, this one.
Okay, and I think, you know, yeah, I think going forward, it's expectations between town manager, registrars, town clerk, anything that needs to get done, I think, needs to be beforehand and documented, and honestly, I, I mean, this is what I've done in the past, is both parties sign off on it, this is what we're agreeing to, if you do this, then this, if we're, this is our expectations, and there's no more of this, and both parties sign off on it and agree it, that way there's no assumptions, you know, and I think that might help going forward.
Yeah, no, that's a good, that's a good thought. There, it's over again, we got a motion?
Yeah.
Got a second?
Yep.
All right, what, yeah, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed, right, so moved.
Thank you.
Thanks. Joan, Joan, go home while you're ahead, all right, just, just, yeah, yeah, just, just, we're good, run, quick, run as fast as you can, I would do it, no, we'll see you, Joan, have a good night, ladies.
Yeah.
I give you A for persistence, that, no, no, no doubt about that, ladies.
He's on it, that's all I can do.
You're on it, you're on it, we, we got it, okay, all right, so let's, let's go back to, can we revisit the motion that's for the budget? Yes.
Donna?
Donna. Oh, where did Donna go? She was there, right?
She's there.
Oh, there she, oh, there you are, Donna, sorry, there you are, Donna, Donna, I'm sorry to bother you.
Yeah, we're very sorry.
Sorry, got your mom.
Yeah, very sorry.
Thank you all very much, I apologize for not being there tonight, but.
No, God, no, no, please.
We're still in the throes of making plans, so it's just going to be a tough, a tough few days.
Understood.
No apologies, please.
No, God, no, Donna.
Thank, thank you all, thank you.
So, where we're at, Donna, just why we, I bothered you, and I'm, I'm sorry.
No, no, I offered more.
Yeah, I know you did, that was your mistake, saying you shouldn't have done it, no, it's okay, no, it's good, it's good. So, we're, we're at the budget, so we're basically, well, we didn't take the full vote yet, but we know where it's probably going to end up without your vote, so what we decided to do was, we took out of the town budget based upon the vote, twenty thousand four hundred dollars, it was a specific item, it was the, it was the.
Dividers.
The dividers in the animal control building that can't be wood anymore, they have to be cinder block, so we took that out of the budget, because it's the town, we have to take a specific thing out, so that would be what we would reduce the budget based upon the vote for, and we would leave the Board of Ed budget the same, you know, the minus fifty thousand as it was with the original budget. But we have, three folks don't, don't want to take the, anything out of the town, which the vote, the no votes, and to lower the town budget, you know, seem overwhelming, so we, what we did to the, after the first votes to the Board of Ed, you know, we should follow suit to me with the, with the town, and take, you know, a little bit less out because it's a smaller budget, but nonetheless, something should come out based upon the voters saying, no, too high, because there are big numbers for that, that there's no question as to what the voters told us the second time about the town budget.
About the town budget.
About the town budget, so the vote would be to, to, you know, take the twenty thousand four hundred and sixty dollars, whatever it was, just that one line item out of the town budget for the animal control, and, you know, push it off to next year.
Okay.
Yes, I'm sorry, yeah.
No, so, and, and we're in a position to push that off till next year without being in hot water?
Yes, we, we, yes, that was discussed, too.
Okay.
So, yes, Kate, what do we got? Yes, that's removed, we'll do it, we'll do it again, yeah.
Okay.
Move from the table.
All those in favor, aye, we removed it, we removed it, okay.
Apposed.
Are we doing a roll call vote on this, I'm sorry?
We're going to do a new motion.
Okay, all right, go ahead.
From the table.
Just from the table.
Yeah.
So, we're, we're going to.
The first vote's still valid, right? Still open?
It's still open for the vote, right?
You only have to vote. Yeah.
So, I'm.
Right.
So, you need, so, I'm a yes.
We're okay, Donna, thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
So, we're good. So, we'll, okay. Yes, so.
Yeah.
What, all, all those in favor of, of the removing the twenty, right, I got the right motion, all right, just to make sure we got the right motion here, all those in favor of removing the twenty thousand four hundred dollars from the town budget?
Aye.
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 No.
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 All right, so.
We're through.
We're three, eyes have it, thank, thank you, Donna, I'm sorry, we're, I'm sorry to bother.
No, no, the, no, it, you know, I, I offered, Mark, I just didn't think that I'd be able to be up for the whole meeting, and I'm sorry for that.
Oh, oh, wait, we didn't vote on the motion.
Motion.
I thought, I thought. Yeah, that's what I thought.
Yeah.
Yeah, I thought we put the new one forward, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Be on the motion, right.
Yes, we're good, we're, we're good.
Do I get to vote twice?
No, we're, oh, for the heck of it, why not?
I mean, it's a losing battle up in Hartford, I'll vote twice.
Not in Chicago.
Oh, boy.
That's the best laugh I've had all day, Pete.
Good.
We're good, Donna.
All right, thank you all, all right.
Thank you, Donna.
Thanks, Donna.
Good night now, thank you.
You're welcome.
Good night.
Was it, no?
Okay, thank, no, really, no. You're cruising right along, you're cruising right along, number, number, number three, we're cruising right along.
Yeah.
Almost halfway done, not quite yet.
All right, so number three is a tax abatement for Bunney Overhaul and Aerospace, this has gone through the Economic Development Commission, and Chris Edge is here on this, this should be a, should be a simple one for you guys, but Chris, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, yes, so Bunney Aerospace, who doesn't expand for a couple of years, added five thousand square feet to their front building, three-year tax abatement, fifty, forty, thirty, Economic Development approved it, it fits our criteria, and again, helps a local company to grow.
Thank, thank, thank you, Chris.
Thanks, Chris.
Thanks for your brevity, actually, at this late hour, we appreciate that, well, I mean, much like our tax abatement policy.
Right.
This is, you know, follows with, I'll just flush it out in another sentence, but we all, we all get it, so he's building a building, and we're giving him a break, as we have done for many businesses, to allow them to expand in our town, and then they pay the full, the full ride when they're done. So, what do we think, folks, any questions?
Nope.
If not, we're good, take a motion.
Move to approve a tax abatement for Kevin M. Bunney Lifetime Trust for a five thousand square foot expansion at one twenty-seven New Park Drive, a fifty percent in year one, forty percent in year two, thirty percent in year three, for the town's tax abatement policy.
Take your second.
Second.
Thank you, any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, all right, so moved. All right, number four, we're moving now. Well, thanks, Chris, good night.
Night. Night. Number four is with Timberland Golf Course, this is for a capital request that had already been allocated, you may recall, for a leaf collector, and Saul Guerrero is here this evening to discuss the, the leaf collector, which is off contract, and this is authorizing the purchase for that. Saul?
Good evening, everyone.
Hi, Saul, how are you?
Before I talk about the agenda, just want to give a shout out to the girls' Berlin High School golf team and Coach Barnes for winning their conference today at Timberland.
Oh, nice, good, yeah, excellent.
Yeah, so next up will be state, good luck to them to the next step. Like Ryan said, this is more of a formality, my agenda tonight, I presented to you all about, a couple of months ago, about a, a leaf collector at Timberland, we have a, our current equipment there is pretty old, and if it so happens to be not working, it would be a bad time for us in the fall and the cleanup process, so, thank you for your consideration and putting us into the budget, and thank you to the finance team for their creativity and including us into that.
Yeah, appreciate it, Saul, appreciate keeping the golf course looking good, so, what do we think, folks, any questions on this?
Is this, didn't we approve a machine for sixty-eight thousand, that's the same one? Or was that?
That was the Green's mower.
I think that was the mower. Yeah. Okay, and we, right, this is in the budget, allocated, yes, it's allocated, all right, take a motion.
Move to approve the purchase of a new leaf collector from AOK Turf Equipment using using the state contract number zero-three-one-one-two-one-ATE for an amount not to exceed seventy-five thousand seven hundred and thirty-two dollars.
Thank you, second?
Second.
Thank you, Sandy, any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, all right, so moved.
Thank you, Saul.
Thanks, Saul.
Thank you so much, have a good night.
You too.
All right, we'll move on to agenda item number five. This is similar, this is another item that had been allocated and presented to you. And Brian Freeman is here, her director of IT is here with us this evening, so I'll turn it over to him on this police server upgrade that is needed and funded.
Hey, Brian.
Hey, good evening, all.
Hi. Hopefully you went home, took a nap, ate dinner, showered up, and whatever, and came back. You had plenty of time to do all that. Yeah, no, I got it, got it.
Long wait here.
Sorry about that.
Oh, it's fine.
Sorry, yeah, 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 see?
Get through.
Yes.
You guys may remember, last October, I spoke to you about the police department. They currently have four-hour mission critical support on their servers and storage devices. These devices are, as well as the licensing for VMware and Windows Server Support, will eat, excuse me, will reach end of life October of 2025. So they pretty much cover everything at the police department, report writing, booking prisoners, dispatch, cruisers, everything runs off these servers, typically have a five to seven-year lifespan. And this purchase will cover hardware and software for the next five years. It possibly could even be renewed after that. So the total cost on this is two hundred and forty-five thousand dollars, which we have our quote at two thirty-one eight one five eighty cents with remainder in there for contingency. And all costs are under the Connecticut State Contract EMC value point pricing.
Okay, great, thank you. Any, yeah, I mean, we, I know we've, we talked about this. Any questions?
Nope.
Hearing none, we'll go ahead and take a motion.
Move to approve the purchase of IT infrastructure equipment, VMware Support, Microsoft Licensing, and Professional Services from Winslow Technology Group of Waltham, Mass. For an amount not to exceed two hundred and forty-five thousand dollars, using the state contract listed above, this amount includes thirteen thousand one hundred and eighty-four dollars and twenty cents of contingency for this project.
Thank you, second?
Second.
Thank you, hearing no other questions, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, so moved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Evening.
All right, all right, you too.
You, Brian.
Your laptop, I think there's one or two still downstairs.
Sandy, come on.
Yeah.
Just give them a call.
Absolutely, thank you.
By the way, they work well, they're great. Yeah, that's good.
Thank you, Brian.
Thanks. You too.
All right, next up, last, the new business is agenda item number six. This is a formality, this, we've talked a lot about the Neighborhood Assistance Act program. We, it was initially before you, then we have a public hearing, which we had earlier this evening. This is the motion to actually approve it, so that's why it's before you again.
All right, hallelujah. If there's no questions, we'll go ahead and take a motion.
Move to affirm prior support for proposals from the Prudence Crandall Center, Berlin Lions Charities, Inc., and CCARC Incorporated for the 2025 Connecticut Neighborhood Assistance Act and a tax credit program for, and approve the setting of a public hearing for Tuesday, June third.
Uh-oh.
We already did that.
What do we need to do, Kate?
Okay, Charlie, you're going to just move it, all right? But move to affirm prior support for proposals from the Prudential, Prudence, excuse me, Crandall Center, Berlin Lion Charity, Inc., and the CCARC, Inc., for the 2025 Connecticut Neighborhood Assistance Act, tax credit program, and that, and then that's it.
Yeah.
Right?
That's it, thank you.
Second.
Second, great. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, all right, so moved.
Oh, we got Karen.
Yes, yes, so we are, we have one appointment, it looks like. One appointment for VNA, so we'll go ahead and open the, open the nominations. And we have one nomination.
Move to nominate Karen Peglero.
Yep, for the VNA, yeah. Any other nominations for that? Hearing none, we'll close the nominations, vote on nominations, all those, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, all right, so moved, all right, welcome Karen to the VNA. Okay, whew, all righty, Town Manager's Report. I'm sure it's brief tonight, Ryan. Sorry, I'm sorry.
You saw it from the body blows. There's flying discs everywhere tonight.
Whew, wow, it was something.
So just a couple of things, you had asked about a firefighter picnic, remember?
Yes.
Firefighter, yes. So I did speak with Mr. Simons about that. Jim was saying that at this point, it's unlikely that we would do anything prior, likely after August and likely after the Berlin Fair at this point, just so.
Okay.
But he was looking for some direction from you, the council, as far as what you were thinking. Just, just so you know, typically, they do a picnic every year. It's usually funded by donation and individual, so anyone attending, it's ten dollars per person. The department kicks in ten dollars per person, but it only gets, he said, twenty-five to thirty people. So it's not very well attended, so he was saying, he didn't know if, and maybe next meeting, maybe he can come and we can have a real.
Oh, let's do that, yeah, let's do that.
We've been, you know, having, having since.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it could be, I was thinking more of a dinner myself.
Me too.
Yeah, right?
Yeah, I just wanted, you know, we have been looking into that.
Yeah, okay, that's good.
Ask Jim to come to the next meeting then.
We want to thank him, you know?
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
And the stipends did go through.
Oh, good.
The Lamentation Mountain Fire.
Oh, good, excellent.
As far as, you may have seen, we did launch a Berlin newsletter, an email.
Yes, I saw that.
So we can use that for mayor updates, we can use it for all sorts of different stuff, but the intent is to keep the town informed, and people can sign up. Right now, it's on our Facebook page, but we're also going to get it on the town website. We're going to get it out so people can, can put their email list and get updates on, on a whole host of things. Like, for instance, we just used it today to let people know that the town hall will be closed tomorrow from eleven forty-five, or excuse me, Thursday, from eleven forty-five to two fifteen for employee appreciation. Thank, you know, thanks, and so all employees, the councils, welcome to attend. It'll be at the Italian Club here in town, and so, so town hall will be closed. So we just, you know, trying to get out and let, let folks know what's going on in town and get that communication up. And just to talk briefly about the tabulators, I know John, John's not here anymore, but we did have an individual from the tabulator company in today and told us that we can't, the way our questions are worded on the budget referendum, we can't extract that information the way it's currently written. The easiest solution would be a charter change that, I think, John pointed out earlier, you could have one question, which says, do you approve of the budget, yes? And then no, too low, no, too high? And it would be all one question instead of broken out.
Yes.
One and two, that would be the cleanest way to actually get, no, exactly.
And they'd only be able to vote one, one vote.
Be able to vote one.
Yeah, that's, that's.
Yeah, so that's the way to do it, you'd have to charter change. But, but I did want to let you know, we've been looking into that as well. There's no way to do it currently, so even with their new tabular machines and software.
What good are they, then?
I know, well, that's a good question.
Are they? Not too good, not good enough, Kate, look at this. How much, how much taxpayer money do we spend on those? Still can't get the answers we want, right? I'm sorry, Kate, I'm just giving you a hard time, Kate.
We're asking the wrong questions.
We're just, yeah, that's it, we'll fix it, we'll fix it.
Yeah, let's go. Wait, well, I. And I just want to point out, I know you, you're all aware, but the town did receive that one million dollar steep grant.
Yes, that's great.
Thank all, the department, we're working on that, and that's a fantastic thing. So we'll get going as soon as we get a contract on that. Thank you.
Excellent, whoa, whoa, excellent, excellent, special reports, we had one, we had an ordinance committee tonight. We passed it on to the town council.
Right.
For the noise ordinance, right? Well, we didn't get there yet, we're almost there, we're almost there, committee report, so the ordinance committee's coming, the noise ordinance is coming to the council next time, council communications, what do we have, folks?
I have just one thing.
Yes.
And it's quick.
No, it's okay, whatever.
But the Berlin PD on Thursday is doing their torch run for the Special Olympics. So I just want to wish them good luck for that, and it looks like it's going to be good weather, so I think it's a great cause.
Yeah.
Just wanted to mention that.
Absolutely.
People are around on the route, hey, cheer them on.
What's the route?
I do, I can show it to you, I gunned off the Facebook page.
What time they coming through town, do you know what time they coming through?
Yeah, I can tell you, actually.
So we know.
One more thing, right?
Yeah, she's looking something up.
In your packet, you'll have, in fact, it was kind enough to pull all of the, from nineteen ninety-four to present.
I saw that.
Every charter change and what the town voted on and considered, so I know.
Got to look at that, yeah.
Cruzen had asked for that, but.
You got it.
If you're going to have a charter change, that's a great place to start.
Yes, thank you, Kate, appreciate that, I did see that, a lot of history there, some we'd rather not go through again, that's all right. Ever, yeah, never, 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 never. After tonight, you want out of here bad, I get it, yeah, no, many of us want out of here bad, no, it's good. What do you got, Sandy?
So they're going from Southington to New Britain.
Oh, okay.
And it says they start at Route six, three sixty-four in Southington Road, so.
From Southington.
And then, yep, and then they're going.
Chamberlain Highway.
Onto Chamberlain, then they're going down Norton.
Oh, down Norton, oh, okay.
Sariot to Christian Lane to New Britain, New Britain Animal.
Oh, nice.
Where they headed off, so they do have it posted on their Facebook page, so, and it looks like they're going to start at just about one o'clock and finish about ten after two.
Oh, okay, through the town, okay, so about an hour. Okay, great, thanks, that's good. Any other council communications?
Nope.
Nope, we'll have a motion for the approval of the May thirtieth.
Does Mark have anything?
Yeah, I do.
Oh, Mark. Don't you dare ask about the senior center or anything else, all right? No, go ahead, Mark, I'm just kidding, go ahead, go ahead, buddy.
Something I mentioned to you, something I mentioned to you and Ryan about earlier is getting a proclamation for the Veterans Committee, Charlie and, what's his name, Pete, I think, or?
Yeah, Pete, Pete Galgano and Charles, yeah.
Because, I mean, they, they do such a good job with the, with the parade and everything, especially this year, we had a record crowd, and.
Oh, yeah.
I think we, they ought to be recognized, so, I mean, you know.
Yeah, we're going to do that.
I think that's a good thing.
Yeah, no, that's a good suggestion, yeah, we're going to do that, we'll work on that. We got to get some information, which we will get, and we'll get that done within the next meeting or two, at the most.
That's, that's all I have.
Appreciate it, Mark, come on, something else, no, I'm just kidding, all right?
You want me, you want, you want, I thought you wanted to go home.
No, no, just kidding, exception minutes, May twentieth.
I move for exception minutes of May twentieth, as presented.
Yeah, second?
Second.
All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye.